I'm managing this piece.
You're live.
All right. Good evening, Milis. I'm Lauren Barnes. I'm the Chair of the Milis Select Board, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to change how we will be conducting town business for at least the foreseeable future. Tonight via Zoom or via your favorite cable carrier, we have assembled subject experts on the unfortunate issue of COVID-19 and our town's response to it. Among our subject experts is in fact our State Representative David Linsky. We have a very tight agenda, but a very important agenda to update the community from the last meeting that we had on the 23rd. So what I'm going to do is just walk through a couple of housekeeping things. The first is that you, the ID for this meeting is on the top of this slide 852-638-7223. You can log in. It's free. If you have a question, it's easy to do so. So using Zoom has become increasingly popular. Teachers have adapted to it. Companies have adapted to it, and as you can see, government has adapted to it. So you just join Zoom for free, and then you put that meeting ID in and go from there. And if you could, just because ambient noise can be very powerful, we do ask that while you are listening to the subject experts, that you put your microphone on mute. And then there is a way to go to the participants bar and then just indicate that you want to speak or raise an issue by raising your hand. There's a little icon. And Karen Burey and I will do our very best to monitor that so that we are keeping in touch and welcoming participation. If somebody for any reason gets overlooked, that is absolutely unintentional. In addition to Representative David Linsky, who I'm going to have start us off in a moment, I'd like to acknowledge and thank not only the community as a whole, all the employers, the amazing first responders, the teachers who have had to turn on a dime, the employers who are able to support their employees during a time of temporary unfortunate hiatus, and those who've managed to pivot their businesses to create some new opportunities. We've been reading of some heroic stories of random acts of kindness. I think a lot of people saw the nice story about Primavera Restaurant in the Boston Globe, and there are other restaurants in town that have converted from seated service to takeout. And there's so many people to thank. A lot of us are driving young bear scavenger hunts, and we're seeing hearts on windows of buildings indicating everybody's support for those people who are doing incredible work on the front lines. Tonight, we are joined in addition to our State Representative, we are joined by Milis Fire Chief Rick Barrett, who heads up the Milis Emergency Command and Emergency Response for Medical Help, our Director of Milis Board of Health, John McVay, our Police Department Chiefs, Chris Saffire, our Town Administrator, Michael Gazinski, our Director of Town Operations, Karen Burey, my colleagues from the Select Board, James McCaffrey and Peter Germain. And we will have two different attorneys join us from Town Council. To start off, we have Attorney Jay Tallerman, and then toward the end, we will have Attorney Kate Federoff. But most importantly, we have you, and that's what's super important, and we thank you very much for adjusting to this format. We hope that the 5:00 time is helpful so everybody can get the information that they need, know that the town is working very hard, very diligently, and very safely, and then in fact can go and enjoy a nice dinner with your family in the comfort of your home. I would like to acknowledge our entire state legislative contingent for all of the help that they've quietly but fervently been providing to Milis on both the legislative front as well as with resources. Representative Dooley dropped off some N95 protective masks as those have become available. We've been on his distribution list, which has been tremendous. And I know that David Linsky, Representative Linsky is going to talk in a moment about all the legislative activities that's been going on, including within literally the last hours. So I'm just going to share before we get in the general agenda that we have for you, and then tell you how it's all going to work. So we're going to discuss these items that are on your slide now, a state of emergency declaration. We're going to update what's been going on in Milis since the 23rd. We are going to discuss moving out our town election and town meeting. We're going to discuss how we can be effective in communicating using social media, appoint some police dispatchers, and round up with a contract, two contract ratifications. So this is how it's going to work. We're going to raise each agenda item. I'm going to invite my board colleagues and our subject experts to provide their knowledgeable information and update. And if in fact there is a decision to be made, we will be voting by roll call. You can see on your slides that there is state and local, local and state information where you can log in, and this is also posted to the town website. And I also want to mention that for those people who aren't able to participate tonight, this meeting will in fact be recorded. It will be broadcast by Milis Community Media on its YouTube channel, and you can in fact enlist in notification email services called List serves. We have a town notification email, and we also have a school notification email. Those addresses are indicated here, and they're available on the town websites. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to raise the, sorry, raise the notion of, nothing like an ill-timed phone ring. I apologize. What I'm going to do is I'm going to raise the notion of declaring a state of emergency, and I'm going to ask our Town Council first, Attorney Jay Tallerman, to speak to what this entails from a legal perspective, and then to ask Representative Linsky to provide some context as other municipalities have taken this step. Attorney Linsky.
Hey, Tallerman.
I'm sorry. Yes. Sorry about that.
So we provided a sample declaration, which a lot of towns have been doing. You know, this kind of swept over a number of towns, and a number of towns did it. There is technically no such thing as a municipal declaration of emergency. It's not a creature of statute. It doesn't vest you automatically with any other powers you don't already have in times of emergency, to the extent that you have many powers. That said, even though it doesn't open the door automatically to anything specific, we have recommended that where a town is interested in doing it, that you go forward in doing it for a few reasons. I think the primary reason that we recommend is that it sets the tone, and it sets forth a background, a factual background, to the extent that you're required to take an emergency action, whether that action may be relating to a permit or a health matter that the Board of Health has to do, or a police matter that the police have to do in this time of a declaration of emergency. And that action is challenged. And I think from an evidentiary perspective, it's important that we have something to rely upon that says, on March 30th, the Milis Board of Selectmen or Select Board chose to declare or voted to declare this an emergency. In that way, it sets forth a basis under which we are then taking the next step to take certain actions. So a lot of the towns we represent have done it. We do want to demystify the myths around it. It does not, again, provide anything official that you can, that can unlock the door that you can't unlock already, but we do think it is helpful.
Representative Linsky, do you want to add to that?
No, I mean, he's put it out there very, very well, and I would make the same recommendation to you. The bigger states of emergencies, actions have already been done by the governor and then by the federal government in accepting Massachusetts' request for a disaster. But you're well represented by Town Council, and I would suggest you follow his advice.
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions?
None from me. I think it's just fine. Thank you.
Jim? Mr. McCaffrey?
No, I think it's certainly something that we should be considering. I think for purposes of the public, we ought to read portions of it as part of our motion so they know exactly what it is. So I'm prepared to make that motion.
Please do.
I move that the Board adopt the declaration of emergency, which recognizes the fact that, as was stated earlier, both the Governor of the Commonwealth and the President of the United States have announced national declarations of emergency, and ours will be complementing that. We also are doing it so that we fully empower our public safety individuals with the necessary authority that they will have to help anybody who is in need of help. And we will declare the state of emergency to facilitate and expedite the use of resources to protect persons from the impacts of COVID-19, including but not limited to emergency expenditures which may come our way under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 31, and also limitations on the hours that we are allowing for access to public buildings in order to protect both the public and our employees. So this declaration on behalf of the Select Board with the collaboration of the Board of Health, I make the motion that we adopt this effective March 30th, 2020, to be, and to remain in effect until further notice.
Second.
I'm so moved and seconded. I will conduct a roll call. Oh, you know what? I didn't see. I did not see anybody who had any questions, by the way. I did look from the public. I'm going to do a roll call for passage. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. The motion to declare a state of emergency for Milis has been adopted unanimously. So now we are moving on to the discussion about moving out our town meeting and our town election, not in that order. I guess we're also looking again to Attorney Tallerman with respect to the motions and legislation.
So as it stands right now for the moving of the town meeting, you already have the authority, all the authority you need under Chapter 39, Section 9. It's always existed and notwithstanding any setting of the date in your local bylaw or charter, you have the authority to move that up until June 30th. So that exists. We've prepared a simple one-sentence motion for you on that if you want to do that. There is a package that Representative Linsky is well aware of that was passed by the House, and I believe is, was over at the Senate today, that would give you relief beyond June 30th, but it gets more complicated after that. But for the time being, you have the authority to move town meeting until June 30th. Moving the election is normally not allowed, but you have the authority under a special act that has been passed to move that by a vote of the Select Board. Following that vote, if it is moved to a date, then there are a number of notice provisions and other paperwork that has to be done that we would coordinate with Mike and Karen, your Board of Registars, and your Town Clerk. And we have a separate one-line or one-sentence motion for that too, that we've already given to you.
Representative Linsky, do you want to comment on this and the ecosystem of all of the municipalities across the state, or your district in particular?
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. We recognize that a lot of the towns were facing the same issue. So we did pass legislation last week that allows the municipalities by a vote of the Board of Selectmen to move their spring town elections to a date certain. And including that is a provision that the people who are currently holding those offices will continue. So Lauren, you're going to have to stay for a little while longer. I know you were looking forward to getting out of this business, but I'm glad that you're there for the time being anyways. As far as town meeting goes, I believe that under the statute, and Town Council should correct me, that the town moderator has to have a consultation with both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen. And then after that consultation and after making a determination, the town moderator can make the change of the date. But I'm going to leave that as to the specifics of Milis to you folks and to Town Council to do that. But obviously, unfortunately, the town of Milis may not be in a position to hold their annual town meeting and the town election safely on the dates that you had planned on. In addition to that, we've also made some changes in the tax bill situation that are available to you on a local auction to try to give some relief to the property taxpayers in Milis. And that's something that you don't have to deal with tonight, but it's an issue that you may want to look at. And you want to look at it from two standpoints. One, is it helpful to the citizens and taxpayers, the property taxpayers in the town of Milis? But then does it also work in terms of your cash flow? Because I realize that you have a municipal cash flow that you folks are going to have to consider too, whether or not you can do it. This is all a moving target, though. And there are a number of other municipal relief measures that are in the pipeline dealing with permitting and automatic approvals in the planning boards, subdivisions, permits, all of that, that we in the legislature realize that the towns are going to need some relief from while your town halls are effectively closed. I applaud all of you that are either town employees or volunteers for the town that are doing everything in your power to keep the business of the town of Milis moving forward under extremely, extremely trying conditions. And we recognize this, and we know how important it is, particularly in a smaller community that runs on volunteers like the town of Milis, to be able to have some flexibility. And we're working very hard in the legislature to get that all done. So whatever works for Milis, I think that we've covered in the legislation so far. But by all means, if there's something that is particular to the town of Milis, please get in touch with me and Representative Dooley and Senator Roush, and we'll get it done. Because we're here to serve you at this unbelievable time, time that none of us ever, ever could have foreseen. So thank you. Thank you, Lauren. And we look forward to having you be a selectman for a few extra weeks.
Well, I'm happy to do it. Please don't go anywhere. Let us know.
No, we're not. We're not.
Because we're going to hold that conversation on the property tax relief. We need to have that item on our agenda. So I think what I'll do is I will open the floor to my colleagues.
Madam Chair, may I just, a quick clarification?
Yep.
The State Rep. Linsky did accurately recite all the great work that he and Representative Dooley and Senator Roush are doing in relative light speed to help us out on a number of fronts. The statute that relates to action by the moderator, however, isn't quite applicable to, that's a separate track that could, that would happen if the moderator chose to take matters in his own hand, in her own hands, rather. You have the authority under a separate statute to move it without consultation with the moderator and for no reason at all. Whereas if the moderator chose to do it, he would have to then consult with the public safety or public health officials, as Mr. Linsky has said. So I'm assuming Aaron will be part of the process when we actually have to move forward to the town meeting, but it's not necessarily part of the process for moving the town meeting. Just wanted to make that clarification for, more for tasks for myself, Mike, and the Town Clerk tomorrow, but just wanted you to be aware.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just to add that I have reached out and contacted the town moderator regarding some of the proposed dates. I know some of the, some of the dates that have been put out there were June 1st for a possible town election and June 8th for a possible date for, to move the annual town meeting. And she did indicate those, those dates worked for her, and she was supportive of that. Having said that, you know, I know that the, there are some, going to be some changes at the election which will change that, but certainly those dates work in consultation with moderator. And I know that the Town Clerk is here as well. And I believe if there are questions about the town election and the practices followed, and how we could move forward with that as early as June 1st, she said she's willing to speak to that this evening.
I think that I have two questions for myself, and then I want to open it up to my colleagues, anybody else on the phone, on the meeting call. The first is if we declare a quote-unquote "date certain" as June 1st for the election, and then for reasons that are obvious to all, we can't execute it in a safe way, I guess my question is for a Town Council as to what happens then with respect to all the notifications and ballots and such. And then the second is, I would like to hear from the Town Clerk as to how absentee ballots would be encouraged and allowed where town hall is closed. But I presume that's one of the strategies, is to diminish crowds going in on one election day and to have a paced absentee ballot process or early voting. So those are two questions asked of two different individuals.
So on the, on the first question you asked, if the state of emergency continued and you felt it was unsafe to have it on that date, deciding very close to June 1st could be problematic. There are still statutory requirements for the time to prepare for an election and provide notice. So there are some issues that could result from that. My guess also, however, is that if we continued in a state of emergency up to that point, we'd probably be seeing some additional packages of notice provisions and the like for that. But technically speaking, under the existing legislation, the process for moving during the state of emergency of the election a second time would potentially be the same, with the exception that doing it so close to June 1st would probably be unfeasible given the notice provisions. So there are some risks there waiting too long.
And the Town Clerk, does she want to speak to the other issue about a strategy for not having crowds at town hall?
Hold on one moment. Lisa Harden, Town Clerk, is coming up to the microphone. Let us know if you can hear her.
Hi, this is Lisa Harden, the Town Clerk. Can you hear me, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It's, I have every confidence that we would be able to provide notice to the community about the change in the town election date and promote absentee ballots and with discussion with the Board of Health. I have a plan for how to actually have the town election on that day and provide the social distancing required, and also possibly provide some quote-unquote "early voting times" if people don't want to do their absentee ballot by mail. We might be able to do a low-key kind of thing in, maybe in Room 130. That's just an idea with proper cleaning and social distancing and everything.
I would think that one of the issues is in having election pole workers be available because it is kind of compact, but also the use of the devices that has in the past been such a great efficiency is probably not going to be of appeal. So we're probably going backwards to paper. Is that what your plan is?
Yes, that would be the plan. The, we would just use the paper voting lists like we used to do. And there's, there's a way to do it so the only person touching the, this is on election day, the only person actually touching the ballot would be the voter between picking it up, voting, and putting it in the machine. And I'm sure we can, by having a discussion with the appropriate parties, address any other COVID-19 issues.
Do any of my colleagues or does the Town Administrator have anything to add to this discussion?
Madam Chair, I would just add that Town Clerk and I have had some discussions, and from those, I agree with her. I feel that if we're able to get a decent percentage of the population, the voting population here to do it through absentee ballots, so we have a lighter voting day, actually in person, it should be manageable to have, keep proper distancing and still go through the processes and be able to have a safe election where people can follow the protocols being put out by the Department of Public Health. And I don't know, and you know, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen between now and July 1st, but assuming there's, you know, where, where nothing has drastically changed, I know we're probably going to go through a peak of cases, but I think we should be able to move forward with an election on that date based on the information we have right now.
Do either of my colleagues have any comments to add?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Couple of points. I believe that the advice, some of the material we received from Town Council indicated that if we're going to move the election in order to actually make it an official movement, we have to designate a date. We can't just leave it hanging. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct, but I'll let the Town Council speak.
Yes.
Yes, it is correct.
That is correct. So if we're going to make a move, we're going to have to do it with a date. Now, I've removed the phone from this room, so I don't know where this is coming from.
It's the bat phone.
I think it's the printer now that's talking to me. In any event, so I think if we're going to do it, we got to pick a date. And if we have to then do it again and move it back even further, then we're going to have to do that, I suppose. We need to give, as I understand it from the Town Clerk, 30 days advance notes so that ballots can be printed and absentee ballots be made available. So if we don't do something today, then the town election is May 1st. And so, you know, I would like to make a move, this meeting, to pick a date and to see if we can achieve it. Now, you know, from my perspective, and I think from a lot of people's perspective, this is not something you do lightly. An election is core, critical component of governing ourselves. So for us to do this, I want the public to understand that we're doing it because we feel it's in the best interest of public safety and public health. But I think it's important for us to keep our eyes on the need to have an election. There are people who filed for candidacy, they're looking to serve the people of Milis, and want to have their chance to get voted upon. So personally, I feel as though it's up to us to pick a date, certainly in June, not before June, in my view. And then hopefully, we will be able to hit that date and, you know, be successful in holding the election. I think there's some leeway in the legislation that allows us to use ballots we've printed, even if we have to push back the date a little bit. So I think this decision is really important to take tonight if we feel as though we're comfortable with it. And as I say, it's not something that any of us do lightly, because, you know, voting is a sacred component of what we do as a, as a town and as a nation. So I think we ought to, you know, make the decision tonight and then hopefully be able to reach it, but not just go blindly for it.
Mr. Germain, do you have anything to add?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have a couple of quick concerns. I would like, I've heard that 6-1 and 6-8, well particularly 6-1 for the election, seems to be a date that's reasonable from a lot of perspectives. My only concern would be, are we cutting it too narrow? Would an extra week or two be more reasonable, given where we're at now? We don't know what the status is going to be. Or is it better to choose, say, June 1, and recognize that if things have not settled down, we're going to have to push it out yet again. So my concern is basically not to push
So my concern is basically not to push the time too tight, much as I hate to defer an election for all the valid reasons that my colleague just mentioned. But if we're going to defer it, let's make sure we defer it to a date that we feel pretty comfortable we can hit without having to necessarily move it yet again.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
The clerk would like to speak.
Yes.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, this is Lisa Harden, the town clerk. I would recommend that you pick the date of June 1st because that would allow me to order the ballots this week and we could start the absentee ballot process now and the notification process. And that would still allow you to change the date as long as there's at least 20 days notice, which would be around May 10th or something. You could change the date and we could still use the same ballots and people who have already voted, it doesn't matter because the, the content of the ballot won't have changed. And, you know, you could push it out another week without anything really having to be done except notifying people that it's being pushed out a week. So I think, I think it would be better to just pick the date now.
I don't have a problem with picking a date now, but I share my colleague's concern about nipping it too tight with all the unknowns. And I guess I'm, I'm looking for legal counsel to confirm that we can in fact move the date of the election as I just heard.
As, as I said previously, you can, but Lisa just referenced some of the requirements for it. You can use the ballots again. You need 20 days notice, so, under this special act. So there is, it does require some amount of work. I'll just state anecdotally that a lot of towns are in that, doing their elections in that first week and second week of June where they've moved them to and feel pretty comfortable with that. Again, we don't know what's going to happen. We hope by May, we're done with a, some of the restrictions on moving around and gathering, but we can't predict that right now. So I think the, the legislation provides a good format and a, a way to do a do-over, so to speak, if you need to. So you could do June 1, you can do June 8, you could do another date anytime in June. It does not have to be spaced a certain amount of days from your town meeting. It could be before or after your town meeting, whenever you feel. That's a policy question, so.
Question I would have is town council representation at a town meeting. I wouldn't want to pick a date and then find out that every town you represent, your firm represents.
It is going to be a very busy June for us because it's our town meetings and the election is less of a big deal for us, although we do tend to answer some questions around election day. It's the town meeting days that we're more concerned with. So on the, so I don't want to mix apples and oranges. So choose the election when you feel it's best and you can get the most representation. I provided a list of town meeting days that are available for myself. I'd like to be there if possible and I have some leeway there. I think we've identified the 8th so far and I've penciled that in and haven't scheduled anything else for that day.
Is it any of my colleagues, any other comments from the floor? I don't see anybody raising your hands, so entertain a motion on this. Can we do the two together or do we have to make two separate motions?
You need two separate motions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion with respect to the town, the town election. And the motion which was provided to us by council is pursuant to chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020 and Act granting authority to postpone the 2020 municipal election in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and increase voting options in response to the declaration of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the board votes to postpone the town election currently scheduled for May 4th, 2020 to be held on June 1st, 2020.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes, I apologize. That's been moved unanimously and we need another motion with respect to the town meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I moved pursuant to Master of Health's Chapter 39, Section 9, due to the governor's declaration of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the board votes to postpone the annual town meeting from May 11th, 2020 at 7:30 PM to June 8th, 2020 at 7:30 PM to be held at the Milis Middle High School Auditorium.
Second.
So moved, I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes, it's been unanimously voted that the town meeting for spring 2020 will be now held at the Milis Middle and High School Auditorium on Monday, June 8th. And we'll have more communication on that. So thank you all very much and.
Madam Chair, could I just interrupt for a second or interject? The town administrator, you know, has done an outreach to other elected officials as well as the chair of the finance committee. Those people generally were in favor of, all of them were in favor of moving the town meeting and with the same kind of reservation that we expressed, they would be supportive of rescheduling the town election. So I just want everyone to understand that we've tried to do an outreach here to make sure that those who are directly involved, particularly elected officials, at least were consulted. And I think that there's pretty broad support for the moves that we've made this evening.
Thank you very much for that. And while Representative Linsky is still with us, we would like to issue the first formal invitation to him for Monday, June 8th. Hopefully you can join us for our intended town meeting. And now a broad set of topics and updates for which our representative will certainly have some information to provide. We're going to update the information that we furnish to the community. We've tried to be very transparent as is legally allowed for us. Obviously, we hold HIPAA requirements as being immovable, so we are very respectful and compliant with those. So what we're going to do is between our Director of Public Health, John McVeigh, our Fire Chief and Emergency Command Director, Chief Rick Barrett from the Fire Department, as well as our Police Chief, Krista Fire and Representative Linsky, we're going to cover the following ground. An update as to what's going on with our town, symptoms and how to acquire medical help and the right way to do it, what is happening with town services to the extent that we've had to adapt them, financial questions, which Representative Linsky indicated is some, there's some updates with respect to potential tax relief, how the community can in fact offer local help and any information updates. So with that, I'm going to invite our Board of Health Director, John McVeigh, as well as our Fire Chief and Command Director, Emergency Command Director, Chief Rick Barrett, to take it from here and update our community as to our COVID response.
Hi, everyone here, if they can hear me?
Yes.
I'm Board of Health Director. Good evening. As of today, the 30th of March, to get everyone up to date with the stats, the particular of Massachusetts and Milis, there are approximately 5,752 cases in Massachusetts. Norfolk County has 628. Unfortunately, we have 56 COVID-related fatalities and deaths and 43,000 people have been tested thus far in the state, which is great news. We're seeing, I think, the rise in cases because the testing has been more prevalent as of late and more labs approved for testing as well. We have in Milis currently two cases, two positive cases. It's relatively low in comparison to most cities and towns and we'll hopefully keep it that way. Part of the process when someone is deemed positive for COVID is we get alerted by the state and then the public health nursing staff will do a close contact investigation and start isolation and quarantine procedures. I know there's been questions about, you know, should we know the identities and so forth and so on. Let me just say that under HIPAA, which is a very, very strict federal law, we cannot release any type of names. And also when looking at the social media avenue, rumors and things of that nature can be very harmful, so please refrain from, you know, guesswork or whatnot. We're just, you know, we're trying to get through this the best we can and we anticipate potentially more positives in the future. But that being said, I think that people have a right to privacy and this listing that we do have positives, I think is enough. Just, you know, do the typical social distancing and the hand washing and it will also be safe in that direction. Let me see if there's anything else here. Oh, yes, just to let people know, we're following the governor's orders, the Department of Public Health, the Centers for Disease Control, which if anyone knows, everyone knows it's changing by the day. But make sure you get your information from reliable sources. There's sources out there that are less than accurate. Make sure they're coming from Department of Public Health, Centers for Disease Control and Governor's Office, so accurate information is out there.
Thank you. Chief Barrett?
Good evening, sir. This is Chief Barrett with the Milis Friday Board. I would just echo what John said on the rumors. The best thing you can do is look to the professionals for the answers. Unfortunately, social media has a tendency to spread rumors about the numbers of people affected and all that does is, you know, make the community nervous. If somebody tests positive, our Board of Health is notified first, almost as quickly as the patient is notified. So our Board of Health will have the most up-to-date information and if you have questions, you should direct those to the Board of Health and not social media.
I didn't know if, go to the next slide or next, as far as like symptoms, and I can split that off with Chief. Typically, the symptoms that you do see with COVID are high fever, general delays and tiredness. One of the striking symptoms is a, a dry cough. So if you have any of those symptoms or a combination thereof, you should, you know, talk to your PCP or your doctor. I'm also hearing, and maybe the chief can chime in on this, headaches and gastrointestinal issues, GI issues might be a symptom that's popping up as well. But those three, high fever, tiredness and dry cough are the main symptoms. And again, we're in flu season, so you can always assume that what we're seeing there is COVID-related. It could be a run-of-the-mill flu, but send it over to the chief, maybe he can add to that.
Yeah, sure. So the hospitals are seeing a broad range of symptoms from a fever and a headache to severe respiratory distress. So it really depends on the patient. And one of the big things are is it is a respiratory disease. So showing us a breath is a pretty good sign. But again, our biggest information we want to give you is if you have some of these symptoms, the first call you should make is to your primary care physician. Have a conversation with them about the symptoms. They'll go over a plan with you and if they decide that you do need to be tested, they're the avenue that you want to take. We don't want to inundate our hospitals with patients who think they have it. Start with your PCP. Have him, him or her decide your best course of action and then, then we can go from there. And if you do need an ambulance, we have a procedure that we, we would ask you to follow. Do you like me just to go right onto that?
Please do.
So again, after we've talked to your primary care physician, if the decision is made to call 911 for an ambulance transport, the best thing you can do is give us as much information about your symptoms, how long you've had them, if you were in contact with anybody who was tested positive. The big thing is we don't want to hear, "A friend of mine's cousin hasn't and I talked to them." It's really firsthand contact with somebody who's tested positive that we want to know about. The best thing you can do is give us as much information as possible to our 911 dispatches that will help us protect both the police and fire departments as we respond. We would ask if you are strong enough, you know, to meet us at the front door. If you have a mask, please put the mask on. And then from there, you know, public safety will instruct you on our next steps. But it's really important that you give us as much information as possible as you, you know, can believe. Our dispatches are inundated with the calls and they'll ask a lot of questions, but a lot of times it comes down to you providing them with the information that's needed to pass on to your fresh responders.
Thank you. So with that, I think we'd like to ask our town administrator to update the town as to the operations that are continuing and how they can access services and information when the town hall building is closed to the general public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate from the last update, the town hall is restricted to employee access only at this time. Anyone that needs to conduct any town business is encouraged to call or email. You can certainly go to the website for a full listing of phone numbers, but the main number here is 508-376-7040. The transfer station is still open Wednesdays and Saturdays. The DPW is still conducting meter readings with certain precautions as far as going inside is very limited at this point, but they will still be doing meter readings. You can certainly call them at 376-7091 for that. Our Council on Aging is continuing with the Meals on Wheels. However, the, the senior center itself is closed to the public. However, anyone needing any assistance can call the Council on Aging at 376-7051. And anyone that's looking for information or has a question in regards to any construction in the community is asked to contact our Building Commissioner and his email address is listed on the slide. So we, again, we are still here and taking calls and responding to emails, but we are trying to follow the public safety guidelines and keep any contact to a minimum.
Just to add, Madam Chair, just to add, as Mike said, we are in a skeleton crew. We are swapping as to who is in the office at any given time. I know even the day that I'm home, I am working from home, so happy to answer emails or forward you on to the appropriate people, so please do reach out via email. If you aren't able to get anybody on the phone, we are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask our two public safety chiefs to now talk about the services that their departments are providing and how they've had to modify them during these times, starting with Chief Barrett.
So as we stated last week, our lobby is still currently open. We are disinfecting it multiple times a day. We have stopped any station tours, station visits, no car seat installations. Our home inspections has been waived and the real estate brokers have been given a form that must be filled out that both parties agree that the house meets the requirements set by the state for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. And then after the emergency declaration is lifted, we would do a follow-up inspection. Additionally, we are suspending new construction inspections for a short period until we can work out some things with contractors. And then burning permits, we have a small window left for burning permits. Again, we waive the need to come into the station. If you'd like to burn, you can call in, get a permit over the phone and then follow. the procedures that we have on our website.
Good evening. Chief Superior with the Millis Police Department. The Millis Police Department's lobby is currently closed for general business. We're asking that the public either call us by phone if it can be handled over the phone. We're just trying to limit our contact with the public as we're trying to limit you with contact with us. You know, our safety, your safety and health is just as important, and it trickles down to your family. So we're very fortunate where everyone is healthy here right now, which is fantastic, but we are going to take as many precautions as possible to keep the distance from the public and still effectively do our jobs. That being said, we've received a lot of calls about license-to-carry permits. So our renewal applications are being handled online via email. We won't be doing renewals in the building. Any new license-to-carry applicants can submit their applications online, and we'll be in contact with you to schedule an appointment. Reason being, in order to get a new license-to-carry, it requires the officers to be in very close proximity with the applicant to take fingerprints and photographs. So we will schedule an appointment down the road. Solicitor permits have been suspended. There should be nobody coming to your house right now. If they are, please call us immediately, and we will respond to the area and find out what they're doing. We'd also ask the public, if we do respond to your house and it's not an emergency, we are going to ask you to meet us outside one after the, it'll just make a limit exposure to us as well as you. Records, crash reports, again, we have a lot of requests daily for both. Crash reports and records requests can be submitted online to Sergeant Myleski. We have that contact information available on our Facebook page as well as our website. And lastly, the leadership camp, we've also received numerous calls on that. Obviously, that's on hold for a date to be determined.
I don't see any questions. Again, I am monitoring those people who have logged into Zoom, so if you are not raising your hand, I cannot find that you have any questions. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for our chiefs or any comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask the two chiefs about, just spend another minute or two on the protective strategies you're using for EMTs, firefighters, and police officers to make sure that we're providing them with the equipment they need to stay safe.
So I'll start with the police department. While our officers have full TAVX suits inside the cruisers in the event they have to go into a scene, that requires them, that may have a potential exposure, so we have those. We have the N95 masks. Each officer has been issued two for the time being, as well as we've limited the number of officers that are allowed in the building at once. Lunch breaks, typically, you know, you'd have lunch with each other. We don't do that anymore. So we've taken all the necessary steps to maximize any potential of exposure to the coronavirus. That being said, as everyone knows, both our departments are small, so if we get a couple personnel infected or sick, that's going to be a pretty difficult thing for us to negotiate moving forward. So we're trying to keep everybody as healthy as possible.
Yep, and just to build off of that with the fire department, we've taken some extra steps. At the beginning of the firefighter shifts each day, before they make their way into the building, there's a health evaluation that we give to each firefighter EMT. We take their temperature, they fill out a questionnaire, and before they're allowed in the building. We do that three times a shift, once in the morning, once in the evening, and then the following morning before they leave. As for equipment, right now, we've been getting very generous donations from the public, from builders, from Rettouli, and just today we were able to get some personal protective equipment released from Regent IV. So our firefighters are going to be deployed on every call with a mask, safety goggles and gloves, regardless of COVID symptoms or not. It's just to protect themselves and also to protect the community. So if you see them arrive for a twisted ankle and they're wearing the mask and the goggles, it's just because we're protecting everybody involved. Again, we are disinfecting our equipment, you know, multiple times a shift, and then we have to follow a strict protocol. When we arrive at the hospital with a suspected COVID patient, that allows us to put the ambulance back into service and then, again, disinfect everything, including the station. Like the chief said, we're trying to limit how many people are in the building daily, and that's tough for a firehouse. One of our greatest strengths are our numbers, and lately it's been very quiet around here because, again, we're trying to protect each other and our families because, like the chief said, first of all, the department, if we infect, you know, one shift, they could really drastically hurt us. So we're taking as many precautions as we can, and thankfully, we're very well situated with personal protective equipment right now.
Thank you. Mr. Jermaine, do you have any questions or comments?
Not any particular questions at this point. I think the comments that have been made are excellent, but what I'd like to see reinforced is recommendations to the community, because people still go to the grocery store and other locations. And as the two chiefs have noted, they take lots of precautions to protect our people who are first responders, but it's also incumbent upon the community to protect itself and others when they have to go out to, whether it's grocery store, pharmacy, or other places, that they should be taking similar kinds of precautions so that they don't endanger either themselves or others. That'd be the only comment I'd make.
Either to either of our chiefs or to Director John McVeigh, do you want to comment in response to that for the community precautions that they should take?
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, I would add that that's important, the social distancing part, just if people just adhere to that and don't, you know, get into groups, especially when you're shopping and so forth. One of the complaints I got over the weekend where people said, you know, they saw whole family members from a, you know, vehicle going into the shopping center, you know, if you can limit the amount of people that are in there that are needed to be in a facility at any given time, that's key, because then you keep down the density of people in that facility, in that shopping area. So that's key, and basically keeping the six-foot distance, and that should help. Obviously, the stores are doing their part by wiping down equipment, and, you know, if you have your own sanitizers and things like that, that you can, you know, wipe down the shopping carts in the high-use areas where the hands may be and so forth, that's helpful as well.
And I would just add, I would just add that the most important thing is, if you're not feeling well, please do not go out, please do not go to the supermarket. Best thing you can do is ask for help and see if there's somebody who is healthy that can go for you. That's the way we stop the spread, is when you're sick, stay home.
I was just going to add, wearing gloves is something that was recommended to me, even though we think that we're getting spring at some point, that wearing gloves is not a bad idea. And I also want to acknowledge and thank Roach Brothers, which as an organization has kept their store very well-staffed, and they did offer for senior citizens and/or for residents who are immunocompromised, which should not be taken advantage of by people who are of good health. There are people who know who they are, and you might not know who they are, but they really depend on the ability to be in an environment with minimal opportunity to have anything contagious, because it would be very harmful to them, because they have some sort of immunocompromised condition. So they made those hours available on Fridays very early, and we just ask everybody in the community to be nice and not to deliberate on social media as to whether or not they would have any idea whether or not you would be eligible for that. I think the spirit is there, and all we can do as a community is do the right thing. And Chief, you were going to say something?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just to respond to Mr. Jermaine's remarks, just briefly, on Saturday, I did have a couple police officers reach out to me, you know, concerned about the amount of foot traffic within the community. I think during the night, people lose sight of what's going on. This isn't a, this is not a vacation. If you're out walking around, just be aware of your surroundings, as well as the people that are in the vehicles. There is a lot of extra foot traffic in town. Pay attention, pay attention on the side streets. Be aware of anyone walking, running, riding a bike, at the crosswalks. There was a very large influx of traffic, foot traffic within the community, and just people need to be aware of that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I'm going to move on to local financial health. Obviously, we are aware, and we are, many of us are living through the dramatic economic impact, and this is where having Representative Linsky will be very timely, because this also has been an unfolding conversation at the legislative front. Let me just call people's attention to a couple of the slides that are already provided while Representative gets, becomes prepared to offer some remarks. First of all, Millis does not have the ability to unilaterally change tax law. We have to comply with state law, Massachusetts General Law 60, Section 15. And to the extent that we are put in a position going forward to modify anything or we're able to adopt some procedures that have been newly offered by the state, all of that information will be made publicly available through our website. In the meantime, the treasure collector's office is in fact still receiving payments, and you do not have to go into the office to do so. You can make payments online, through the mail, or through the Dropbox, which is secure and on the side of the building to the lower side of the front staircase. And at this point, I would like to also ask Representative Linsky if he could offer some current remarks, because there has been some attention to essential businesses, possibly that list changing, and other relief measures.
Thank you very much, Lauren. You know, this is a time when being part of government, being an elected official, makes it worthwhile for me to do the job, but it makes you realize the impact that we have on people's lives. I always talk about that the first responsibility of government is public safety, to keep the people safe. Well, one thing that I think that we've all come to appreciate over the last few weeks is, and the integral part of public safety is public health, in that I don't think that the general public had an understanding of the role that our public health departments had in keeping all of us safe. And I think that we have all learned a very important lesson about local public health, state public health, and national federal, national public health in keeping us safe. So initially, I just want to say a big thank you to the public health and public safety workers who are putting themselves at risk, along with our frontline medical personnel who are putting themselves and their families as well at risk in doing the first job of government, which is keeping us all safe. So initially, thank you. When I look at the financial impacts, I think about it on a macro level and on a micro level. And what I mean by that is, is obviously there's an impact on the cities and towns, on the state as a whole. There's also going to be a national impact on this. But then on a micro level, it's also hitting every single family, every single household in some way. And so my office, who is still up and running, I just wanted to know, and working hard, is responding to both of those types of impacts on a daily basis, and we're open 365, 24/7 to serve the people of Millis and Sherburne in any way we can, and I just want to talk about that initially. So on an individual level first, we are responding to obviously a huge influx of calls related to two issues, so actually three issues. Number one, unemployment insurance, unemployment compensation, and we're there to be able to assist people in navigating that very difficult process in a situation in which they never anticipated. What is going on there now is that the state website today is being updated to take into account all of the changes that the federal government made in signing the CARES Act on Friday. It's not ready yet, so the governor has asked for people who are looking for the expanded eligibility in the CARES Act, which is basically 1099 employees, self-employed people, and so-called gig workers. They are going to be eligible for unemployment, but we're not ready to take them right now. Right now, the state is taking in the people who would be normally eligible but are applying for unemployment at 10 times the rate that they had been a couple weeks ago. So that's that. The second area that we're really trying to help out right now is expanded mass health eligibility, in that virtually no one, well, let me say this, at a hospital, no one is going to be denied care guarantee, whether you're insured or not. But in terms of mass health eligibility and expanded health connector eligibility, the state has now really is accepting just about everybody, and they'll deal with the finances later. We want people to get health care, whether or not they have insurance or not. That's important in an overall public health perspective. We'll figure out the finances later. Get health care if you need health care. Don't let finances stand in the way. And the third is, is there's getting to be now a greater demand on what I'm going to call safety net services, in that there is now an increased need particularly for homeless services and substance abuse services, and the state is not going to fail, is not going to not give those services out. We're going to figure out a way to do it. Some relief is on the way from the federal government right now. So under the CARES Act that got signed on Friday, Massachusetts will receive somewhere between $2.7 billion and $3 billion. Now, obviously, every aspect of state government has been, and local government, has been affected by this incredible economic downturn over the last couple weeks. And we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fill a lot of holes. In the town of Millis, obviously, your meal tax has fallen off a cliff. You're not going to get any cannabis revenue to speak of right now, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And in addition to that, individual taxpayers are going to start to have some real problems in probably paying their tax bills. Like I talked about earlier, as far as the property tax bills, you don't have to make any decision today, and I would advise you not to make any decision today. But I think that you folks are going to start to need, need to analyze whether or not it is a good idea or not a good idea to defer tax payments for individual property owners or the other steps that we've made available on a local auction. Everything that we've done related to tax deadlines... Everything that we've done related to tax deadlines is on a local option to try to give the towns the flexibilities that are appropriate for your own individual cities and towns. I just want to mention a couple of other things. Obviously, with the closing of Town Hall, people who might be in need of services that are on a human, human services area that may not be readily available, I would, I would urge people to call 211. 211 is the state, state-sponsored hotline to put people in touch with any type of human services or governmental services that they need. And I know that your Town Hall is closed, people may have trouble getting in touch with their local officials, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a 24-hour hotline, 211, that's available to them. In addition to that, the state has really opened up a couple of web-based programs that people should, should be made aware of. The first is on the mass.gov website, following the links for the COVID-19 area, there are websites that can connect you into all, all kinds of areas. There's a, there's an area, if you need, if you are in a position to make a donation of medical supplies, there's an area, if you are a business that wants to sell medical supplies, the state in terms of procurement. And then there's a whole separate area on a new initiative that the state has done with BuO Health, that's www.b-u-o-y-health, H-E-L-T-H dot com. That is a, sort of is an online screening thing to see whether or not you may have the symptoms for COVID-19 and whether or not you should be contacting the healthcare provider. The bottom line is this, is that I'm there to help the people of the town of Milis in any way that we can, whether it is on an individual basis or on a town basis, where we want to help you. This is something that we have never seen before, we never anticipated, but it's where government can do its best work. It's the best work that the Milis Fire Department can do, the best work that the Milis Police Department can do, and the best work that the Milis Public Health Department can do. And we'll figure out a way, we really will. You know, Milis is, is an amazing community that has responded in, in so many different ways. I also want to say, I got to put out a shout out to the work that the Milis Public School Department is doing as well, as well as the school departments everywhere else. I think that anybody who has a school-aged child now knows that the schoolteachers are, are doing amazing work. And I think that anybody who has a school-aged child right now probably can't wait for their child to go back to school in a whole lot of, for a whole lot of different reasons. But, you know, this is where we're, we're pulling ourselves up by bootstraps. We didn't ask to be in this situation. We are in this situation, and we're figuring it out. You know, look, it's not easy being home 24/7. We're, we're doing this. We've had to adapt in government, on a state level and on a local level, to doing it, but we're figuring out ways. And I applaud each and every one of you for everything you're doing. Lauren, I know you've had a specific question about the cannabis revenue, because Milis was fortunate enough to be able to just get a cannabis business up and going. You know, we probably have gotten more questions on, you know, why are some businesses a quote "essential service" and why others aren't? I know that on that particular industry, the statewide association made a request to the governor. This is not a legislative decision, this is an executive branch decision. They considered that request, and they made a determination that it's not. So for better or for worse, I think that ship has sailed. And it has sailed for the time being. I don't see a different decision being made in the immediate future. I know it may not make sense with particular to Milis because it, with the medical and the recreational being housed in the same building. I know it doesn't seem to make sense, and that's probably a unique, a unique situation. But I think the ship, quite frankly, has sailed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that, that anybody has, and I, I absolutely encourage people that if there's something that they think that my office can, can help on, pick up the phone and call my office, 617-722-2575, or contact us via email, and we're, we're there, we're working, we're working. We may not be in the state else, we may be scattered around the state in our own homes, but we're, we're still there to, to work for you. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to talk with the people of Milis.
Wow, that was tremendous. Thank you so much. And yes, we do have a couple of questions from the community, and I'm going to start with my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, who I saw unmuted.
Yes, well, Representative Linsky, thank you very much for the, the support. And I think that we probably, as a community and as a town, with respect to the cannabis issue, are going to say, never say die. The governor is not king, so I think it's incumbent upon us as a community to try and convince the, the administration that that's not a good decision as far as we're concerned for the reasons, some of the reasons you mentioned. We do happen to have a facility where it's co-located with the medical, so it's open. And we do have, we believe, an operator who is ready, willing, and able to incorporate any social distancing that is required to maintain public health. It's also, you mentioned that we're fortunate to have them, I think we are, but it wasn't just by dumb luck. We worked very hard to incorporate that as part of our broader economic development area. So we thank you for your support. We'd look, hopefully, we'll continue to have it. I think I'd like to see this board at some point during this meeting to come together and find a way to contact the administration, tell them that this is a problem for us. And you mentioned, you know, lost revenue, that's one of the issues. Certainly, we have Milis residents who are employed in the business. We have, you know, a, a local owner who contributes to the community broadly. So for us, it's, it's a real issue, and it's certainly a lot of money. And just as an example, you mentioned meal tax. We roughly run $9,000 to $10,000 a month and gone. And that will never come back because even if everybody flocks back to the restaurants, they're not going to spend the money on the, you know, food they didn't get for the two or three months that we're in, we're in this emergency. So it's not the only issue we're going to have for financial, from a financial point of view, as you're well, well aware. And I, so, but this is really important for us because it's a critical part of what we were trying to do, and frankly, by cutting it off, it, it, what it does is it eliminates our ability to try and address the impacts, which are the HCA was designed to address. So not contradicting that, you've painted a steep hill for us to climb, we're happy to try to climb it because we don't think it's a reasonable, a reasonable outcome for, for our community and perhaps for some others. We are concerned also about, you know, obviously, not only are we going to see some revenue issues, the state is going to have the same issue. We're hoping that the cherry sheet numbers that we've been working with are going to hold up, even though we'd love some more because they're not much higher than last year. But if they erode in any way, that's going to create some real financial headwind for us. So hopefully, the legislature working with the administration will be able to at least find ways to maintain the cherry sheet estimates that we've received so far. And lastly, I do want to say, I know it's all kind of nerdy, but the work that you're, you and your colleagues are doing on financial relief for, if we have to defer our town meeting till next year, next fiscal year, those provisions which allow us to keep operating in a much more reasonable way than was originally proposed are very helpful. We appreciate the effort there. From my point of view, I think it gives us comfort that, you know, this may be a difficult time period, but it, hopefully, in all likelihood, won't create serious problems in the first couple of months of fiscal year '21, even if we can't hold a town meeting. So I do want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Chair?
Yes. I just wanted to, in part, reiterate what my colleague just said regarding cannabis and so forth, but what I really want to emphasize is, from my perspective at any rate, I want to thank you for the effort you and your fellow legislators have put in to assist in this crisis period. We know it's a hardship, it's a big hardship in this community. The work you've done and are continuing to do, your willingness to reach out and to allow members of our community to reach out to you is very much appreciated. It's that kind of responsiveness that helps ameliorate otherwise very critical situations. We'll do what we can on our side, but the fact that we've got partners throughout the state like yourselves and Representatives Dooley and Roush really make a difference in our ability to feel that we are part of a community throughout the state that's working on our behalf to meet the needs of our sister. For that, I want to applaud you and thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I just want to thank you again, and, and also from your team members, your chief of staff, Caitlin Kelly, and other members of your team have participated tonight. And I expect part of what they're looking at is this as a model of community outreach, from what I can gather. So thank you so much for, for being part of, of this journey with us. I wanted to mention that to you, Representative Linsky, that I think you know that entrepreneurial and small business is really the engine of Milis, as well as innovation businesses, whether they are the cannabis industry, or hydroponic lettuce, or the, an important military-grade manufacturing technology. So small business owners in service sectors, I'm sure you've heard from them, have been very hard hit, not just the restaurants, but other businesses that voluntarily closed. And I know that the SBA, Small Business Administration, on the federal level, has just introduced some potential relief, but it really comes in the form of loans versus aid. But we are in the process of working with the Economic Development Committee, which is a citizen volunteer group, as well as Robert Weiss, who is our part-time economic development and planning officer, to put together a summary and some website links, so that we will be posting those to the town website via the economic development page. So at least people maybe will have a short circuit to where they might be able to find some of that information. And you might have some additional information for us, Representative Linsky.
Yeah, I do, and thank you for bringing that up. So the part of the small business relief package that the federal government signed into law on Friday, some of the loan programs are actually, don't have to be repaid back if the money is paid out to keep employees on the payroll. So I think that that's something that small businesses should, should really take a look at. Obviously, they're, they're not going to be having the revenue coming in now like they would have, but the idea behind that is, once this is all over, and hopefully, it's very soon, that small businesses, if they keep their employees on the payroll, are going to be in a better position from a business standpoint if they don't have to go out and hire new employees who would then need to be trained and get up to speed. So I'm, I'm going to direct business to small business owners that are interested in those programs to two sources. Right now, each one of the area chambers of commerce are doing very good work in putting together step-by-step guides for the explanation of what these programs are and, and how to apply for them. And then each one of the area congressional offices, in your case, Representative Kennedy's office, along with Senator Markey and Senator Warren's office, have very similar guides right now. They're doing a great job of getting this out. And so while I certainly encourage you folks in Milis, in any way that you can spread the word, don't think that you have to go out and do this research on your own and re-improve the field because it's already been done for you through the chambers of commerce and through the congressional and U.S. Senate offices. But I would encourage people to take a look at it and see if it makes sense for their own individual businesses. You know, the, we know the impact that this event is going to have on both business bottom lines, but then also individual household bottom lines. And, and we get it, we absolutely get it. But, you know, I've been through, as a member of the legislature, 9/11 and the financial impact, as well as obviously, the personal impact of 9/11, and then similarly, the 2008, 2009 financial crisis and the economic impact of that, and we figured out ways to deal with it, and I think we've learned some lessons from each of them. So hopefully, once this is over, we can get back up and working in that those programs design as temporary programs to be able to, to allow businesses to be able to hold on to their costs. So thank you for letting me talk, I have a few minutes to talk about that as well. I, oh, one thing I forgot to mention, there is some local good news on a health front, and that is, as I'm sure Chief Barrett is, is aware of, Lenning Morris Hospital in Natick, that obviously serves a lot of people in Milis, is staying open for the immediate future. That Lenning Morris was basically slated to close their emergency room and their operating room and their inpatient facility, other than the behavioral health facility, sometime this summer. Through the work of Senator Spolka, Senator Roush, and myself in dealing with Tennant, which is the corporate owner of Metro West Medical Center, we've been able to keep that facility open. And obviously, the last thing that we want to be closing right now are hospital beds and emergency rooms. So Chief Barrett, I know that makes your EMS services a little easier keeping that open. You know, hopefully, we can keep it open.
Really does, and I know it's, it's going to ease a lot of the nerves of Milis residents who still rely on that hospital and always request that they get transported there. On a personal note, I'm very happy as my wife is employed there, so she stays employed a little bit longer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Representative Linsky, as you heard from my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, I, and we can take a, a position on this, I guess I just want to ask, what would be an effective way of communicating to you and/or upward to the governor, if not through you, as to our concerns about unlocking the revenue stream? There is a very serious concern for our town, which is a small business, a small business town anyhow, and on top of it, there is an incongruity, as you know, because the, the dispensary on the medical side is one and the same for the adult use side. So it is kind of something that we're unable to explain is why people, following all social distancing requirements, can access the business with all of those precautions in place to acquire products if they have a medical access card, but can't on the other side, and that's the side that really impacts us adversely, adversely from a revenue perspective. What is the way to communicate with you officially?
I think, I think you, I think you just did. But I would also urge you to communicate the same to Representative Dooley and Senator Roush and the governor as well. But I think that, I have heard that loud and clear. Let me just ask a question, because I know I'm going to get asked this question when I bring this up. Do you know if there are any other Do you know if there are any other cannabis facilities in the state that are similar in that they have both the medical license and the recreational license in the same facility? Or is this a unique situation?
Sorry, I can get that information for you if that would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Just looking up and down here. I did have a question that came in. I just want to read it for everybody. And it was specifically that people need some guidance, they're looking for Board of Health guidance with respect to how to handle themselves, to be more conservative about trips to the grocery store. I think we heard one recommendation from our Director, John McVeigh, which is to not go in a group. I don't know whether or not the granular recommendations include things like freezing and buying multiple items. That's a double-edged sword, I think. But one thing that I did hear back was to treat, to assume anybody there could have it, and therefore you should consider that when you're making a decision to go to the store. But Director McVeigh, is there anything else that you want to add to that since that question was posed to me?
No, the biggest thing is, again, the social distancing. And that is keeping to a minimum the amount of people that are in the store at a time that will help with any type of transmission or potential transmission. Again, making sure that if you have, you know, sanitizers or wipes, that you can help the stores, which I think are doing it anyways, wiping down contact surfaces, you know, on the carts, the handles on the carts and things like that, will help. You know, those are the things that you basically, you have to watch out for. And, you know, obviously, when they have those hours for vulnerable populations and people who are, you know, compromised, understand that they're there for a reason, a very important reason, because the group that's being affected the most are that group, the elderly, the new compromised. So take that very seriously. You know, when you, those hours of operation are there, and you could actually save a person's life if you adhere to those hours.
One other, one last financial question for you, Representative Linsky. Obviously, there are expenses that all municipalities are incurring in response to this, both for schools as well as for the town government. And I know that our Director of Finance, working with our town administrator, has begun a tracking process. Do you have any idea what that will look like in terms of whether it's items that are eligible or the documentation that will be required to indicate? Just as we have a process for the host community agreement, we have a process within our government that departments have to advocate for applying some of that financing to be eligible for revenues that come in through that stream. Do you have a sense of what communities should be doing, that we could be doing now to prepare for that conversation?
I think that, you know, in terms of what the decision-making process is, I don't, I can't tell you because they signed the bill on Friday. But keep records, keep records, keep records. In terms of, you know, try to keep in an accounting manner, things that were unanticipated expenses, and I would think that John, you're the one who's really going to have the most here, to a certain extent Chief Barrett and Chief Safire, that you, that where something became a bigger expense as a result of a COVID-19 outbreak, as simple as that. And we'll figure it out, and I will help you. It's as simple as that.
I see a couple of my colleagues, I think Mr. McCaffrey and the chief are both unmuted. Want to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, I think that I agree with what you're saying, Representative Linsky. I think we are doing a good job of that. We're going to continue to do it. We're in the midst of actually an accounting system update, so we should be able to track things pretty accurately. And that will be for both school and municipal side, since we're implementing the same accounting system. So I think we'll be in pretty good shape to be able to do that. And hopefully, we will also work with you and with also our Economic Development Director to try and identify any grant programs that might be coming along, so that we can deliver for the citizens of Milis what they reasonably could be expected to qualify for. So thank you for the effort. And I'm sure there's going to be more at this. I mean, we're, right now, as we should be, primarily concerned with public health, but we all know that the economic fallout is just beginning.
Madam Chair, over the weekend, MEMA has sent out a cost-tracking training, along with some information for federal grants that are going to be up for covering some of the cost of equipment and expenses. So I'll try to forward that on to Mr. Gazinski, so that you guys have it readily available.
Representative Linsky, do you have that already, or would you want that forwarded to your office as well?
You could forward it to me. I think that'll be helpful.
Okay, great. Any other questions from, or comments from the community right now, before we move on to some of the other COVID-affected services? Mr. Gazinski, you were going to share with people kind of what's going on with the schools, unless there's somebody from the school department?
Madam Chair, can I just, before we do that, could we just take a vote on the request for reconsideration on the, make a motion at the board's petition, our legislators and the governor, to reclassify a co-located retail and medical establishment as an essential service?
So moved and seconded. I will poll the board for that motion. Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Luke Barnes, yes. It's been unanimously recommended, and we will have an official letter to our state legislative delegation, asking them accordingly to revisit that. Thank you. Mr. Gazinski, would you like to just update the community with respect to the school closing?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Just for those at home looking at the slide, the schools are, as everyone knows, closed through May 4th, per the governor's order. They're, they do have a listserv for news that you can get through milisps.org. They do also have pickup meals available. At, again, the contact for that is sfallen@milischools.org. And they do have their online learning as active for the schoolchildren, so that is ongoing. And you can certainly still call the schools to contact them at 508-376-7000. So that is the update for the schools.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that? There's a lot of parents who have new appreciation for the great work of our teachers. It's possible that we may lose our state representative, but we're, I think we've, now we're now shifting to different agenda items. So if anybody else has any specific questions about COVID and the town's response, this deck will be available on the town website, and you are certainly welcome to call the numbers that have been offered tonight, specifically the Department of Health. We are actually going to ask Chief Safire to summarize his recommendation to the town to make a total of six appointments for his department. Three are recruits, and the reason that this is being handled today, and will be with motions pending the opening of the State Police Academy, is simply because right now the police academy is slated to open before our next meeting, otherwise we would have pushed this forward. So Chief Safire.
Thank you. Like you already stated, we have three positions that we are filling, patrol officer, one being an officer resigned from the police department, and the other two were voted in the November town meeting. All three applicants have to go through a process, a written exam, a fitness test, which we conduct through the Milis Police Department, background investigation, an assessment center, a physical abilities test from the police academy, a psychological exam, a medical screening, and an interview. We have three great candidates. They have all currently work here at the police department as dispatchers. It's worked out quite well for us. It's a way for us to recruit for the police department and ensure retention. We get a really great candidate. Candidates get an idea how the operations of the police department works, and if this is a right fit for them, just as much as it's a right fit for us. The three candidates I have, the first being Mr. Kevin Conley. Kevin attended King Philip Regional High School. He's got a bachelor's, a science degree in criminal justice from Bridgewater State University. He currently works here as a dispatcher and as a reserve officer for the Milis Police Department. He's a dedicated member of the department. He fills in shifts whenever needed, and, you know, he would be a great addition to the department. In terms of appointing, you know, we're talking about the start date of the academy. If possible, Madam Chair, would you consider appointing the candidate based on the start date of the academy? It's very fluid right now, as you can imagine with what's going on with the coronavirus. It may be pushed forward, it may be pushed back. That's, they're actively talking about it as we're on the conference now.
Yes. So do you want to go through them, and we'll do them as a batch? We'll do the three recruits and then the three dispatchers? Is that possible?
Sure, absolutely. The second candidate is Mr. Paul Curtin. Mr. Curtin is, he attended Catholic Memorial High School. He also has a bachelor's, a science degree in criminal justice from Sacred Heart University. He's currently employed as a dispatcher here for the town of Milis. He's been here about two years, and he's also a licensed DMT for the state. And again, he'd be a fantastic candidate for the department. Our third candidate is Mr. Angel, Tyler Angel. Mr. Angel attended Milis High School. He also has a bachelor's, a science degree, criminal justice from Westfield State College. He is employed now as a dispatcher with the Milis Police Department, and prior to the Milis Police, he was an intern for the Metro Police Department in Washington, D.C. And he'd be a fantastic asset to PD as well.
So before I make, invite my colleagues to make a motion, I just want to remind everybody that two of these officers were funded previously during the fall town meeting by the town meeting body, and that the third is a backfill of a vacancy created by an officer who left the department to pursue another job. Do my colleagues have any comments, or would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I just wanted to formally request that the board ratify my appointment of Kevin Conley, Paul Curtin, and Tyler Angel as police officers for the town of Milis.
Sorry about that, you're right. We have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to formally appoint Kevin Conley, Paul Curtin.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I don't think the town administrator can make a motion.
Good point.
Love them, but not that much.
I just made a request.
Would you like to do that, sir?
I'd be happy to do it. I have a question first. I mean, are there any tests, query or whatnot that still need to be done? Or since they were already serving as officers or dispatchers, I'm assuming that's all done, right?
Everything's done. With them going to the academy as dispatchers, they didn't have a psychological exam or the physical PT test, which they've all completed a week ago. So they don't know that how they've completed all the requirements.
So what we want to do is appoint them full-time police officers effective on the commencement of the next police academy?
Yeah.
So I make a motion?
Second that motion. May I also make a comment?
Please.
I do know all three of these individuals, and I concur with what the police chief has said. They're all excellent individuals, they communicate well, and they do have the community at heart. I've watched them interact with other officers, and I'm sure we're going to be proud of the way in which they serve this community.
So that motion was moved and seconded, correct?
Correct.
Kind of track it. I'm going to poll the board to approve the motion. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Luke Barnes, yes. The motion to appoint police recruits Kevin Conley, Paul Curtin, and Tyler Angel, commensurate with the first date of the upcoming police academy, has been approved, and we will certainly recognize them and their upcoming colleagues when we have the ability to do that in person. So Chief, if you would like to go through the dispatchers, that would be great.
Would you like me to take, would you like to do the full-time dispatch separate from the part-timers?
I think we can do it all at once, can't we? Is there any reason why we can't?
I believe you can.
Again, I'd like to appoint one full-time dispatcher. It's not an added position. Kevin Conley's currently a full-time dispatcher, so when he leaves for training for the police academy, we're going to have a vacant full-time slot on the desk. So I'd like to fill, I recommend that the town consider Colby Zatoli as our full-time Once the three candidates, recruits, go to the academy, her appointment would then be effective as well that same day. Mrs. Zatoli has been a part-time dispatcher with the Milis Police Department for two years now. She's done a fantastic job. She's eager to learn, and she's a graduate of Milis High School, and she's currently working on her bachelor's degree for criminal justice.
Can you just update us as to any outstanding examinations or qualifications for any of these?
She has her medical exams, she has no outstanding exams that she needs to go to. The next two individuals have a drug screen and a physical that they have to complete.
Okay. You want to tell us about them?
Yep. Part-time would be Mr. Tim Smith. Mr. Smith attended Milis High School. He's currently enrolled at Westfield State College, pursuing his degree in criminal justice. He currently works for Westfield State Public Safety, and he's current, and he's trained in 911 APOC, which is Emergency Medical Dispatch, and he's certified on our records management system. So it's more of getting Mr. Smith familiar with how we operate. He's, already has all the training from his other job. And Mr. Smith, again, would need a drug screen and a physical. Our second part-timer is David Pianidosi. He's a graduate of Framingham State College, where he obtained a bachelor's degree in business. In addition, he has a graduate degree from Anna Maria College. He's a licensed paramedic. He's also trained in Emergency Medical Dispatch, state 911 certified. And on a personal note, both the fire chief and myself have worked with Mr. Pianidosi for years, where he acted as a paramedic responding to Milis for years on mutual aid. He would be an outstanding addition to the police and fire dispatch.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I formally request that the board ratify my appointment of Colby Zatoli as a full-time dispatcher, and Tim Smith as a part-time dispatcher, and David Pianidosi as a part-time dispatcher, all for the town of Milis.
Mr. McCaffrey, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that the board approve the town administrator's appointment of Colby Zatoli as a full-time dispatcher, and Tim Smith as a part-time dispatcher subject to completing the drug screening and physical, and David, he had, he had the dosi, also as a part-time dispatcher, subject to drug screening and physical. subject to drug screening and a physical exam. I assume we want all these effective the date of the police academy, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Effective as of the date of the police academy commencement for the full-time police officers.
Second.
So moved and seconded, I'm going to poll the board to appoint Colby Zatoli as a full-time dispatcher, David Piantadosi and Tim Smith as part-time dispatchers pursuant to their, the latter's completion of their drug and, drug screen and physical. I'm going to poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. It passes unanimously and we look forward to welcoming them when we're back having in-person meetings as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to a topic that Chief of Fire knows well, which is adopting a town-wide enterprise social media policy. This has been something that's been discussed for some time and it's no surprise to anybody who rely on our fire department as we are right now, our police department, our rec. department, schools, council on aging that have gone forward and not waited for this. We're now playing a little bit of catch-up. We asked town council attorney Kate Federoff to join us because she has provided to us a policy that represents best practices from other municipalities. And yes, those are my grandsons in the background, I apologize. Trying very hard to keep them amused. And in the time that this has been discussed in open session, attorney Federoff has been tasked with receiving any comments or questions or recommendations from the individual members of this board and she has put them together. And now I'm going to introduce her to identify if there are any elements of the draft policy in place that she thinks would be worthy of changing so that we can hopefully deliver to Millis what has been asked of us, which is an easy way to communicate. And certainly there's been no time like the present to be having the benefit of some social media channels through which we can keep the town informed. Attorney Federoff, thank you very much for joining us.
Sure. Yeah, to give you some background, what I, in your packets, you have what's called the global technology policy. And essentially, what that policy does, it creates a centralized location for everything relative to both electronic communication as well as use of town equipment, et cetera. So it would be really easy for town officials and employees to access in one spot. Because the initial concern that was raised relative to posting news items was, well, perhaps we should just have a comprehensive singular policy that could replace some of the existing policies that you have on the books in your personnel plan. So having been tasked with that job, I put together the global technology policy and incorporated a proposal by the web communications committee, that's not the name of the committee, but something along those lines, who did really great work in putting together a policy of how to post these news items that I'm sure the public safety departments are already doing on tweeting and other social media postings. And I tried to incorporate that policy into the global policy. So again, it would be a one-stop shop. In discussing some of the concerns about operations, I met with Karen and the town administrator to discuss whether or not it was feasible to, given the staffing that Millis already has, to implement this policy. So we kind of put brackets around when these postings are provided to the selectmen's office, whereas when these postings can go just to a specific department page to try to tamp down on some of the strain that it would put on the selectmen's office, which is already undertaking, you know, yeoman's work in other areas. So we tried to put brackets around that and hopefully they're satisfied with that piece. So that's one of the major issues. Operationally, is it feasible? The other policy question which was raised to me was whether or not this should be really targeted to town of Millis, so meaning the government's postings, or it should be broader to include community events and things like that. One of the concerns with making it more broad is creating what's called a public forum. And I use that in the legal sense, meaning there are First Amendment rights that attach to public forum. So if you open it up to one community group, because it's a community group that everyone, you know, really appreciates and it's a friend of the community, you may open it up to other entities which other people may find distasteful, whether it be politically distasteful or it's just a group that's not representative of what the majority of residents would appreciate. So that's the real risk, although some communities do allow for those kinds of posts from private nonprofits and whatnot. That's the risk you take. So I thought, in light of that risk and in light of the concern around that area, we can tamp that down to make sure it's only for Millis government business and events that are sponsored by other government agencies that are taking place and affect Millis residents. So it could be your, you know, regional, I don't know, regional, some regional committee that would be, Millis officials would be a part of. So to really curb against that risk. So that's one change that I walked away from some of our discussions that I think would be helpful to implement and would satisfy some of the folks. And then the third thing is, in the town of Millis, your personnel policies, because your bylaws written in a certain way, require town meeting approval. So that raised an issue for me, and this is kind of deviating a little bit from the strict social media discussion. But that triggered for me just a more labor and employment question of, should that be a requirement that your personnel policies be required town meeting approval? Because, and actually during this COVID virus pandemic, we're really seeing a lot of legislative changes which are being implemented in a very quick way. So you don't have the typical lead time that something's going to be affected six months from now. So I have advised my towns to create a bylaw, number one, that just empowers the selectmen, who are the CEOs of the town, to adopt those policies. It's a much more flexible way to deal with legislation which changes very quickly and requires quick implementation. So that's an issue. But for now, if the board were inclined to adopt this policy, you could adopt it subject to town meeting approval or whatever and implement the posting with the anticipation that town meeting would approve that because they want to see these news items on the town's website. So those are the things that were raised with me and I think were really super good points and we can address.
Any of my colleagues have any comments? Because what I'm hoping, where we are in a mode of emergency communication, is that with attorney Federoff's guidance, that we can emerge with the ability to put in place a town outbound Facebook page immediately. I think that the nature of this communications environment should be pointing us to be responsive. And I think that explaining to townspeople why some areas of government have just moved forward and the town itself is not putting out official information is one of the reasons why we reap what we don't sow, which is independent public venues where rumors and conjecture and frankly hate postings become the order of the day because they're not finding an outbound bulletin board that directs them to the website and we just don't have that structure in place. And I would like to just think that we have hired professionals and adults and people who partake in social media on a personal basis, that this is neither onerous nor unfamiliar. And the fact that in 2020, we're still explaining to ourselves why we have to have this tool is frustrating to me. So I just want to get, I just want to say to my colleagues, I think we owe it to the town, I think we owe it to the town employees to have this tool put in place with whatever modifications are recommended by town council as a result of everybody's community input. But I would feel very irresponsible to not implement a social media policy immediately, whatever that policy looks like, to empower a town administrator to establish at a minimum the outbound face, no comments, Facebook page outreach tool. And I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues.
Madam Chair, I think first I owe it to my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, if he would like to comment first, but I do have a number of comments.
At least go right ahead, Pete. I don't want you fading away.
Let me start by saying, I had a very good conversation with town council very recently. I have to also acknowledge that I haven't been as fully informed on this as I might have liked the last week or so. It's just not been possible for me to be as committed as I would have liked. But I'm back trying to correct that. In light of my conversation with town council, I raised a number of questions, some of which she brought forward just a few minutes ago. I'm going to go through some of my thoughts and some of the comments from my perspective. They aren't necessarily all correct because I couldn't take notes fast enough on certain things. So I've made some errors on certain, but I want to, I do appreciate Kate what you have done. First of all, we do have an outstanding policy right now for employees and so on. It's perhaps more comprehensive than we might like. There's certainly legal wording and other information in there that I'm concerned with in terms of adding to, embellishing. And so let me go through where I'm at. Ours, as we discussed, is perhaps a more traditional social media policy than in some cases. But it has a lot in there about dealing with what we can't do rather than what we can do. And that concerns me. Now, I'm not saying I'm a legal expert, so I'm just saying, these are some of my interpretations. I would like a little more time to review them, but let me go through it further. I know the web committee has spent an enormous amount of time trying to put together their thoughts for social media policies, some technical policy and other things. I also think it's incumbent upon the IT director, whether that may end up being, although I'm acting in that role at this point, to participate in that process. I'm not saying that I haven't, but I have not had, I've not devoted the time I think I should have now that I look at this in a great deal more detail. What I see in this is a need to address how best we got to where we are and how we're dealing with posting issues and what the process is that led us to this point that if I'm not mistaken, was voted on at town meeting. And so it's a policy that exists even today, at least as far as employees are concerned. And so then I look at it and say, are we really trying to replace multiple policies as they now exist? In which case, it concerns me that we're going to end up with something that's far too complex, far too detailed, may not be comprehen, may not be flexible enough, and in fact, might be too comprehensive for what we're trying to achieve. Now, these, again, these are my thoughts. I don't want to distract from what others may say, but I am trying to express my views in light of some discussion we had and some of what I've read over the last little time. I believe that we need a new policy that needs to be revised and simplified. We need a package that represents appropriately what we're trying to accomplish with much more flexibility than I believe is even in the existing package. And what do I mean by that? First of all, what do we want to post? You brought out some issues, whether it's local government issues, local community, state issues, whatever. We need to understand better what it is specifically we're trying to address with this kind of a policy. I am concerned when I hear such things as, we don't want to infringe on First Amendment rights. We don't want to do something unintentionally that creates a problem that others look at and say, oh, well, they were trying to curtail our ability to comment in these areas or that. Maybe that is the case, I can't answer that. But I believe firmly, we need to go into that with malice aforethought so that we understand what the implications are, at least better than I do. And that may be my shortcoming and I admit that at the very beginning. On the other hand, we don't want to exclude issues unintentionally. And so we need to think about a properly written process that's broad enough to incorporate the ideas that we want, but not so restrictive as to keep us from adjusting to needs as we learn more and as we adjust to the future. So I come into the question of, should we recraft what we've got? Which in essence, and I may be wrong in my interpretation, is what I perceive could be happening at this point. And I'm not convinced that that is the appropriate way to proceed. I'm not saying we shouldn't have a social media policy or anything. What I'm saying is, I'm not convinced that what we want to do is recraft and embellish what we already have when we perhaps ought to be redoing what we've got and changing it to meet needs as we now better understand them. Not to be too restrictive, for the select board to have flexibility in how it approaches social media. Then for the select board to be able to take to town meeting if it seems appropriate, which I think in many cases it is, for the town meeting to have the opportunity to weigh in. After all, that is the role of the town meeting ultimately. Maybe the select board has the privilege of being able to make certain decisions, but that doesn't mean it makes it in a vacuum. And it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the opportunity for town meeting to weigh in on these issues if we think that makes sense with town as a whole. I do believe in the concept of simplification. Meaning, I don't like personally to see a series of policies that when you read them, become more and more restrictive and ultimately, I believe, too rigid and can in fact become convoluted just because of the, this set is hemping here, it says something else there, it says something a little different elsewhere. Looking at it from the perspective of media, from marketing and government, I think those are just broad terms, but we need to look at a wide range of what this is supposed to address. I did get into the implications of the policy to affirmatively post items, but the implications also of what if, what do we allow or not allow to be posted? I don't have answers to that, I really don't, but I am concerned. And I ultimately come out with, I'd like something that does give the select board flexibility so that we can make decisions as necessary to meet the needs of the town. That doesn't mean that the town doesn't ultimately have a say in it. That's never to be the case as far as I'm concerned. But that doesn't mean that we restrict ourselves from the ability to move forward, make some decisions, and then, you know, if we're ultimately asked to revise it, so be it. That's the way government works. At any rate, I'm sorry, I'm a bit At any rate, I'm sorry, I'm a bit long-winded, perhaps a little disjointed, but these are my initial thoughts having gone through it. So I now back off and say, if there are other comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I start with looking at this as actually not a single question, but two questions. The first question really is, how is the town direct use of electronic equipment in the execution of one's job? That's the telecommunications strategy, telecommunications access and use of. And then there is use of social media by an employee for private purposes. And from my perspective, those two items are already addressed in the personnel plan, a portion of which was, you know, as we indicated, adopted by town meeting. Now, whether or not it's a good idea that town meeting adopt the personnel plan is a different question. But I'm, you know, I don't think this board has the authority to override what town meeting has adopted. But that's not really the issue that we're talking about. The issue we're talking about is, how does the town utilize technology, whether it's webs or social media, to communicate information to the citizens? That's really what we're talking about. I think this is, I think these are really two entirely separate issues, frankly. And from my point of view, I'm not convinced that we have to change the first part. I mean, there's more words here, but I'm not sure what's not working in the personnel plan we already have. I don't hear anybody complaining that they don't know what to do with, you know, town equipment. I don't hear anybody finding abuse in the use of social media by town employees, their own social media. Now, maybe they are, but I don't heard of them. So if it's not broke, why do we fix it? But I can certainly listen to arguments as to why this should be updated. But there's a separate issue about what we're going to do as a town to communicate with our citizens about things that relate to messages we'd like them to get, which is what the news posting is addressing. To me, it's a totally separate issue. So I think we need to have a policy which tells us what we're going to post in terms of news on the website, and then how we're going to use other social media to drive people to the website, which is what I heard us talking about when we were discussing the issues surrounding COVID-19. So I'd like to have them defined precisely so that when we launch whatever we're going to launch, it's clear that we can tell people exactly what they can expect to get, whether it's on the website or on social media posting, so that they won't be confused. And from my perspective, there's, you know, I, I'm not satisfied with what the draft says, that it's not, I think what my colleague was saying, it's not precise enough. This is what we intend to post, what we're going to tell you, who's going to say it, so that we know who's going to do it, how are we going to say it? We're going to use social media, we're going to use the website, how we're going to do it? And how often are we going to do it? Is it just when things happen? Is it going to be every day? Is it going to be every week? Because only by doing that can I understand what the commitment of resources is going to be. Because I believe that as drafted, which is pretty broad ranging, I don't think we have the resources to execute that effectively. I really don't. So to me, it's not, I understand how we can, that citizens of this town can benefit from us directing them in as many ways as we can, to the source of information which we think is authoritative, which I think is tended to be the website. That's what I'd like to see us address. Now, we just made it, we just made it a decision to move the town election. We need to tell people about that. We need to inform them that that's happened. And how are we going to do it? Well, if you look at what the secret, the Division of Elections told people to do, it said, you know, use reverse 911, put a sign up somewhere. Use the listserv. So as long as we're using all those things, that's good, but what will we get, what additional information we'll be able to get folks if we communicate that information, A, by putting it as a news item on the website, which I think we got to do, and B, telling them, there's information relating to your election, you should click on this. This is going to sound, to those of you who know what you're doing, very naive. I'm assuming you can click something and send them to the authoritative information source. So that's what I want us to do. I believe that the COVID emergency gives us a, for those of us who are foot draggers, a golden opportunity to test how this is going to work, including an outbound Facebook that says, this is the Milis message on the COVID virus and what we're doing about it. And people can sign up and click on it or whatever they do to sign up for the thing. And what that's going to do is it's going to tell them, go to the website, because there's new information. And I want to understand what is our commitment to update it periodically, because particularly in this instance, the time and the amount of information is critical. We've done a good job, and I would, you know, I commend that everybody's worked on the update thing we did tonight and what we did before. But I'm not ready at this point in time to, to launch an effort. I want to do it because I think we can get value out of it right now. I want to understand who's going to do it, how much work it's going to take, and I'm not trying to do this in, you know, the next 24 months, but this is something that we can execute as far as I'm concerned without going to town meeting, because town meeting has never addressed a communications policy, which is what this is.
So we have some experts who use social media, and we've heard from them in the past. And I think we have an obligation to just put up a Facebook page and try it. And I'm willing to play a role in that. We have a very competent team on the website and communications committee. To be honest with you, for, for somebody who is a heavy user, myself, I think that we are really, really missing the boat on this one. And I think that it's incumbent upon us, if we want to figure out the nuances of a policy and how it does or doesn't dovetail with the personnel plan, I think that, that we are making decisions that are fluid enough, things are happening enough, and what's happening is the tail is wagging the dog. The rumors are in full overdrive because of the absence of our participation in proactive, clean, clear outbound messages that drive people to the website. And to be honest with you, I think we're massively overthinking this. And I say that with the evidence of all the town departments right now who've been long on the web. They've long had their own websites, they've long had their own community Facebook and/or Instagram pages, and we are just strangling ourselves by not doing what society in 2020 requires, which is to have a tool that can be used and managed by the, by the town administrator as an outbound tool that will become as reflexive as has been posting an agenda online in addition to posting an agenda in a box on a building. It's just the way in which the world has moved. We go to elections and we, you know, and we've been able to use up to this point iPads. I mean, we need to give our town the tools so that, so the decisions that are happening in real time, such as, is the transfer station open today? Yes, it is. Might it be closed in a couple of days? It might be. And I don't think that type of information necessarily is a reverse 911 worthy announcement simply because not everybody is, or it has a pass to the transfer station. And I don't want the use of reverse 911 to become used in an excessive amount, because then when you have really something that's super important and it has wide, wide application, you want people to really pay attention to that and not start to ignore it. I think that this is, this is not a complicated thing to do. I think we are making it more complicated than it needs. And I don't believe we have any evidence that I am aware of from any of the town departments that have been using social media without anybody's permission, because they gave up on town leadership and said, you know what, we're just going to go move forward because this is what our community expects us to be able to do. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be apologizing to people when I see them, when I can get within six feet of somebody. I don't want to be getting text messages. I don't want to be getting phone calls or emails saying, really? We can't just have a Facebook page that tells people something that's important? I think we should get out of government's way, and I think that, and I understand we are government, but I really think that we are overthinking something that is very successfully used. And I don't believe we have any examples that I am aware of, but I would ask the town administrator where he's had to discipline anybody in his tenure here for inappropriate use of social media specific to any town department. And I would ask his.
Well, Madam Chair, I just, this is, that's irrelevant, because that's a policy about individuals using social media. This is a whole different thing. This is the government, responsible individuals, communicating effectively to the citizens. I agree with that. I agree with that completely.
Okay.
And what I ask, what I'm asking for is few simple things that I understand who's going to do it, what are we going to do, and how are we going to be effective at it? That's what I'm asked for. That's what I've been asking for for months. So I, all I get frankly is, you know, five or six, seven pages that are more complicated than I could possibly imagine, and send me off in directions that I just don't want to go. So I understand you, I understand what you have to say. I think you have strong feelings and points to be made, and, you know, I'm perfectly willing to take a vote on this. But at this point, I can't support the policy that was drafted. I don't think it is going to be effectively implemented. If there's something more simple, something more targeted, I'm willing to consider that. But at this point, I'm just not going to support the policy as drafted, because I think it way overstates what we should be trying to do.
So my question would be, can we implement a Facebook page while whatever policy is happening so that at least we have that channel set up? We are in a, we declared a state of emergency, it seems to me we should take that action.
Well, I believe, Madam Chair, what I said was I'd be willing to consider that if I understood the simple, you know, roadmap that we're going to follow for that singular purpose. And what we'll have is a good deal for, A, how effective it is, and B, how much time it takes to produce it. I, I just do not believe that an effectively communicated, effective communication tool is something that just rolls off your fingers. It takes work, takes thought, takes work, and it's only going to work if it's done well. And from my perspective, I want to know what is the purpose of it? If the purpose of it is to say to people, look, COVID is a problem, we have decided this, we want you to go to this source to get the information that you need, and that source then opens up a whole range of things that people can get, that's fine. If we want to do it more, you know, more comprehensively, then we have to have somebody to do it. And I've certainly heard from a number of people I've spoken to, Madam Chair, of other cities and towns do this very, very successfully. I know it can be done successfully. I know that. But it doesn't just happen by opening the window. We have to understand how it's going to be done. And I understand that you believe that I'm boiling the ocean here, but I don't think so. I am really concerned that we do it well, not just that we do it.
Attorney Federoff, I think you wanted to chime in, and then I'm going to ask the town administrator to talk about how he can use this tool to maybe mitigate some of the phone calls and provide some outbound communication.
Yeah, Ms. McCathie, do you want me to pull the communications, the posting piece out of that policy?
Well, I mean, from my perspective, I'm not going to support it. Okay? I'm not going to support the policy that you drafted on the other things, because I think we already have a policy, and I don't understand why we need a new one. And secondly, I certainly am willing to consider for this board to adopt a, what I believe would be a simple roadmap for Facebook, a COVID Facebook page that the town would sponsor and run, which would answer some questions that I have, is who's going to do it, when are we going to do it, how often are we going to do it? And I don't want it to be a freelance. It's too important. It's way too important to be a freelance in my book.
Oh, so you want, okay, so I just want to understand what I, I need to do. So.
Well, hold on, just a second. I mean, you don't need to do anything at this point.
No, 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 I know, but from your perspective, obviously you have the other two to, to help weigh in on the decision, but so pull that piece out, your, your idea is to pull that piece out for posting newsworthy items, whatever that is, and, and then also limit it to be COVID related?
No, I'm not, at this point, I'm not asking, I'm asking the board, and my colleague, the chair is asking the board, to decide what direction do we want to go in before we ask you to start writing words? What direction do we want to go in? We have a proposal in front of us. I don't see a reason myself to vote in favor of the first three items in the, in the policy. Parts one, I'm sorry, the parts one through, I guess it's six, because I think we've already got something. Until I understand what was better about this one than what we already have, I don't see a reason to change it, and I certainly don't want to support it. But I supported it subject to town meeting approval, because town meeting approved the other thing. The last piece, which is the posting of news items, there's two items there, as far as I can see. One item is, we have a core information source, which is the news component of the website. If that is the authoritative piece of the website that we're going to use to put comprehensive information and up-to-date information for our citizens, then we need to do that. And the second piece I want to understand is, if we're going to use another item to drive people to that source, such as a Facebook or Instagram or whatever it is, then how's that going to work?
Madam Chair, can I just interject for a minute as a, as someone who's in the trenches here? I just want, and I'm sorry, Mike, I'm speaking out of turn here, but here's, here's one of my thoughts. Right now, and especially during this COVID-19 crisis, we are posting things daily on the website. It's vetted through Mike and I, or from whoever is sending it over, and even if I get a request from one of the chiefs, I always speak to Mike about it first, so we make sure that everyone's in agreement as to what's getting posted. And we've been driving everybody to the website for that information. There's actually a blinking sign out in front of Town Hall right now that tells people to go to milis.org. So just to float something out there, if you wanted to perhaps start with a Facebook page as well to get this going, so we're not in the dark ages, we can't, what if it was just that what was on Facebook was the exact same thing that we're posting on the website, just as a start to get it going? So there's two different sources, but it's the exact same information that's going out?
Well, Madam Chair, my point of view, the answer to that is, I don't, if the town administration today, and for the next X, tells me that we have a process in place where authoritative information is prepared on a regular basis, whether it's daily or whatever it is, then the Facebook component of it becomes an adjunct. That's just another way of getting the news out.
Right, that's my point.
And I have no problem with that at all.
And I think, I think we could, we could do that if we just wanted to launch a, a town-wide Facebook.
Outbound only?
Account for outbound only, to provide a notice that new information about this has just been posted on the town's website. Here's the link. And we did something like that, we could certainly get that going within a couple of days.
Well, you know, this is just me speaking, you know, I, I thought that was what I was indicating at the last meeting that I would like to see. And what I, what you're telling me is, it is something we could do, it's something that we can actually do effectively, that the town administrator's office is the central clearinghouse, the yea or nay, and we're going to manage the messages. And I want to know only, the only other thing I want to know is how, what kind of messages? All messages?
Well, that's the question then.
All, all messages on, on this Facebook account would have to come through.
No, the, the information is, what is the information we're going to communicate? Is it information, well, let me take a step back. We already have a process for posting things on the website.
Correct.
Who does that?
That would be primarily Karen.
If it's the homepage, it's me.
Yeah, and Maureen if Karen isn't available.
So nothing goes on the homepage that Karen doesn't put on it?
Typically, no. I will say Deirdre on the DPW does have access to put urgent news messages if she has a DPW emergency, other than that it's me.
What you're talking, what you're telling me now is actually a policy. We have a policy that we didn't write down. The policy is, the town administrator's office will post important information relative to the town government on the website, which, as we all know, thanks to the work of the website committee, is 150% superior to what it was. And also, I believe Karen, you had something to do that as well.
Thank you.
So that's a great step forward. So from my point of view, what you're telling me is we have something, it's manageable. We, you can write it down for me in a sentence or two, now I understand what it is, and or two, and now I understand what it is. And the exception to the rule is that, uh, that the DPW has access, from the DPW, to post information regarding emergencies from DPW. So, how does that information then get to what I am viewing as the front door, the Wi, the, the Facebook page, which is to say, if I got it on the website, it's easy, or maybe easy, I don't know, to, to, to pump that out on the Facebook page, either by repeating it, or saying, "We've got important information. You should check the website."
Right, and that would, that would-
I'm only asking-
Right. We could, if, if, if we focus it just to Facebook and into posting important news items, that could be, I could draw up a draft process in a couple of days, and we could have a Facebook site up, um, before the end of the week.
And, and my thought is, uh, to Jim and to everyone, is that, you know, the website, you would have to know to go to the website to get the information, unless I send out a listserv. You have to physically go to the website to find it, right? If you want to get information out to people, but you, you want it to be the same as what we're posting on the website, because obviously you don't want it to be contradictory, that would go out through a Facebook page, like you said, and you're, that, you're pushing information to people. That is the difference.
Yeah, I see that.
And I think that's, what Lauren has been saying all along, is she, the need to push it out more, right?
The website is passive, because people have to actively go to it.
My concern has always been, who's going to manage, if you start getting into a much bigger social media policy-
If we start, start on the Twitter sphere and start broadening-
Why don't we just start here? I think the thing about, um, Jim, what happens with Facebook is that if, if, uh, let's say something changes with respect to inspections. So, somewhere between the fire chief and the building commissioner, um, there is a piece of news that's involved. And so, it might not be that you're sending everybody to the front page of the website. If that gets too heavy, people won't go digging. So, you would literally provide the link that says, "We have new, uh, a new update with respect to building inspections for housing closings or construction or whatever." And then you put the link. It will drive people to where that link is. It might be on the fire department website that they've done on their own, and they've managed successfully. It might be on the building commissioner's webpage, which is not the front page of the town, but it's in the department's, uh, domain, and they have all the information there. I really-
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, and I think that that's, that's a good outcome, because if I go on this thing and click, and I get nowhere, I'm not coming back. And I don't want to have to go through-
You're right.
The website that, and then it says, "Go and, you know, search for it by term" or something. So, I don't know how much more intricate that is, because I don't understand it.
It's not. And we have a great website committee, a website and communications committee that can really help with this, and I-
But I, I, I understand that, and I think that that committee's done an outstanding job. I'm just an implementation guy. I just want to implement it, and I want to implement it flawlessly and with excellence. That's, that's, that's all I'm asking. And since I don't understand the work that's required for execution, that's what's holding me up. That's, that's the point. I'm not, I'm in favor of the website, the outbound news, because I think it will help the citizens of our town.
Yes, and what happens is, when something gets pushed on Facebook, those people who now, it will work in the reverse of a listserv, because people will now link to Facebook, and then they will in turn share it. So, I, I'm happy to volunteer for this adventure to work with Karen remotely, which we've done very successfully tonight, um, and to engage the website communications committee, and we can put a, a website, a, a Facebook page up that is an outbound-only web bulletin. I think we're going to find instant positive response to it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not in, I'm not concerned about putting it up, and I'm not concerned about the first month, because, yeah, there'll be a lot of good people that want to help us out. It's the fourth month, when that, now, all the, all the creative stuff's done, and now we just have to run the train.
Which I think, I think, I think that doing will provide, will provide that guidance. I think it will. They say, uh, cream, you know, rises to the top. I think we will find, in the course of business, Karen will experience with Mike, with other department heads, heavy users like Deirdre, uh, what really works, and, and they will work with the town administrator to get, um, a fluid process in place that we can rely upon. And I think it's going to be a fantastic tool, and I-
Well, I don't disagree with that, and I would like to know, as part of this, is what is the, what is, assuming that they were busy before, what is it they're not going to do? Because if we, as a board, from a policy point of view, say, the highest value that we place for these five hours of their day, or five hours of their week, let's go that way, is this communication tool, then something else that they were doing before is not going to get done, or somebody else has to do it. So, that's, you know, to me, I'm trying to be holistic about it, and I'm thinking, I'm-
And I think after the setup, if we have people working-
Yep, there's three of us, so I don't want to be just-
Well, I think if there's five hours dedicated to the Facebook page, we got way too much time going into the Facebook page. I think five hours is going to be way overshooting the amount of time it's going to take to set it up, and-
Well, I'm talking about five hours a week.
I still think that's a lot of time. I just don't think it's going to happen.
It's all, if I, if I-
But you don't get news created effectively unless somebody writes up something.
Right.
Has to be looked at to make sure that it's sensible.
Right, and I would, Madam Chair, I would say it, it basically falls back to how often the news items are going to need to be posted and updated. If, if it's only once or twice a week that it needs to be done, the impact won't be that large. If it's two or three times a day, it would be a significant impact. So, it really, that's why in managing, you know, the board's expectations here, if, if we're looking at doing an update maybe every couple of days or twice a week, um, I think at least as a trial basis, it's certainly doable. And then we'll, we can reevaluate in three months to see the, the-
Well, can I just interject on that? Because if the purpose of this, at this stage of the game, is keeping the community updated on COVID, in issues that, as they relate to, uh, the citizens of Milice, this could be every day. It could be every other day. It's certainly not going to be once a month. There's too much happening.
The other thing, I was considering, the thing I will say, Jim, is currently it is. I mean, currently, my whole job has changed, um, in the past week or two, right, Mike? I mean, we've been here more hours than we typically are. It's all COVID, and that's, that's understandable, and it's totally fine. Um, as I get information, as I said, if it's a bulleted point, I get things from, uh, Board of Health Director, from whomever, we put it on the website. If I'm simply taking that exact same message and putting it on Facebook, that's a no-brainer. That's adding a minute. That's adding a couple of minutes. Like you said, down the road, the crisis is over, and now we're looking at a far broader thing. We don't have a communications director. It could get a little unruly, but we would know as that started to happen. And I, right now, it could just be the mirrored-
Yeah, but frankly, from the, the point of view of the town government, if, and we assign a value to this communication, this communication, I'm not talking about the Facebook, or just more rigorous communication with our citizens to engage them, then we have to be willing to make an investment in, in people to make it work.
Yes.
And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm saying we probably should do it. But it can't just happen with the staff that we have. It has to be part of a process where it, it starts effectively, and then it grows to the point where we really need, let's make it halftime, communicator.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, totally agree.
We've all seen what's going on in some other towns and how effective it is.
Right, I mean, some of the towns around us have a full-time-
What's the, you know, we have the issue of, um, you know, scarce resources. I think this Zoom thing is just encouraging one of the members of this board to talk too much. Put myself on mute.
I just would like to know if the board would like to make a motion that we, um, uh, direct the town administrator and the operations director to put up a Facebook, uh, an outbound, uh, town, uh, information Facebook page, um, to work with whomever from the website and communications committee, um, has the time to devote. And I will make myself available. Whether or not I have the time to devote is another item. But I feel very strongly, I feel professionally equipped, and I really think that this, this, uh, this tool is going to come in handy. And I can tell you the number of times I've had to call the town administrator's office, and just because of the rotation of the staff and everything that's going on, there's just not enough hands to pick up all the phone calls. And I think that this would absolutely, um, really offset some of the need for having the staff to be able to answer all those calls real time, because we're going to have a tool that's going to be very effective in getting the word out. And I don't know, Mr. Jermaine, you have not, you have unmuted, so do you have something to add?
Well, I've been listening to this on both sides. I am, as you might guess, very much inclined toward the social media within certain limits. My concern at the moment is part of what I started out with at the very beginning. I see the need for it. I don't see any guidelines at this point, which is something my colleague has been bringing up a little differently than I would bring it up. Um, the question in my mind is, how do we proceed forward with any confidence without even any guidelines that give us an idea, here's what we're trying to put on that site? Don't get me wrong. I know we've got information from our town council that's out there. I happen to think, in part, it's much too complicated. But that aside, the question is, can we put something together quickly? Is there a way to do it that gives me some confidence and says, yes, we need to do this. I want to see it. I'd love to see it tomorrow. But is there a guideline that we can say, here's what's going to go on that site. Here's who's making that decision? I'll be honest with you. I don't disagree that DPW may be adding to the site. Who decides that what DPW is putting on is appropriate? That's what's bothering me at this point.
Okay, I, I have to, I have to jump in. I just, I just have to jump in. This is what I would like to propose to my colleagues, that we empower the town administrator's office to set up an outbound Facebook page, that we, that we assume that the caliber of town employees is such that they will be able, within themselves, to know when that tool is relevant to their department, and that we do this as a pilot for six months. And then in six months, and in the meantime, on a parallel track, we ask our legal counsel, who's been listening, to take everybody's feedback in terms of streamlining and simplifying guidelines. And we use the, the experienced time of the six months to contribute to what those guidelines should emerge to be. And then, instead of watching the other departments be successful, we can actually have a voice for the town, and we will do so much to improve town communication, and we all set that goal. I just want to fulfill the goal that we told everybody we were going to do. So, I would like to make a motion that we allow the town administrator's office, uh, to do a six-month pilot of a outbound Facebook government page, and to, uh, empower the town administrator to work with whomever is, is an interested party in contributing to streamline guidelines during the process of implementation, and then come back at six months to see what is or isn't working. And then we can be responsive to the communications needs of the town that we have right now. Do I have a second? We're not going to have this tool. And we have, we just stated we have a declaration of emergency. I just cannot believe we can't figure this out. We have so many towns that have this, including within our own government. That's my level of complete frustration. I can't believe we're chasing this around.
I'm concerned about putting-
I understand your frustration. Uh, I don't think that the other members of this board have any different goal than you do. We just want it to be effective. And I can't support a six-month trial, because I think it's way too long. Um, and, you know, I would certainly like to see something that says, this is what we're going to do. Um, now, you know, I, I guess I can accept, uh, a launch when, and this is what we're going to do. It gets circulated for approval. Um, and there's no reason, of course, that this board can't reconvene in a couple of days to say, yep, that makes sense to us. Um, you know, we don't have to wait for two weeks. We could post a meeting for Thursday morning and just do it on Zoom. But, um, I, I, I agree with my colleague, Mr. Jermaine. I have to see something. Not just, why don't you go do it? Because I just don't feel comfortable with that.
How do we reconcile that, with all due respect, with all of the town offices that already do this successfully, without our micromanagement, without our direct oversight, and we've never had an incident? I guess I just don't understand.
Well, yep, I guess you don't understand my position, and I don't understand yours, because to me, it's obvious that if you're going to put this in a government-wide, uh, role, which cuts across all departments, it's not focused on anyone's function, that if you don't have some parameters, then the policymaker is, in fact, not doing its job.
Madam Chair, may I ask Kate a question? Kate, given what you've heard, could you put together something as a base guideline that we could look at and vote on within the next two days or so?
Um, yes, I can, I can. What I propose, uh, then I think, hmm.
Can I just say something? I don't see, this is a legal issue. This is not what I'm talking about. I would like counsel to take a look at what the town administrator, for example, puts together to make sure I'm not going to go to jail. But this is an implementation by a function, as to what it is we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And I, with all due respect to Kate, I'm sure she could do it, but I don't-
It may be, but I would expect that she's not going to do it in a vacuum, that our town administrator-
Well, we know she doesn't have any books to read, so perhaps-
Well, yeah, that our town administrator and Karen, and if anybody else wants to set up the two, three, four sentences, whatever it takes, to give a guideline, just something that says, here's what we are trying to accomplish. Here's how we're going to do it. Here's what the purpose is. And we vote on it and say, I don't care if it's a one-month pilot, a two-week pilot. I don't go along with six months, but I would go along with a shorter period of time. But I want something there that represents, this is the pilot, this is the process, and we will refine that process.
But I just want to remind everybody on this board that we did receive that very, um, draft document from the website and communications committee. So, that, that work actually was furnished, and everybody on that committee is in a professional communications role.
Well, I understand that. I don't necessarily agree with everything that they said. That's the point.
Well, do you, do you want to write, do you want to redline that?
No, I don't want to redline it. What I want to do is, I want to do what I've asked, which is, give me, as my colleague, Mr. Jermaine said, give me a couple of lines on what it is we're going to do with this thing, and let me, let me evaluate it. I don't, I'm not even interested in the pilot timetable, because as a board, if we look at it and we evaluate what's happening, and we decide we don't want to do it anymore, we just vote to stop it. We don't have to put an end date on it.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, based on what's been, um, discussed, I would recommend that, uh, Karen and I can work on a, a process based on all the information we received, and based on what, what we have been doing for the website and so forth, and get that out to the board, um, by Wednesday. Um, and if the board wants to meet, uh, you know, virtually on Friday or next Monday to ratify, um, moving forward with some type of Facebook presence, um, then we can have that done within, within a week, if, if you want to have a meeting prior to your next regular meeting.
Well, I think we have to, because for the reasons that everybody here is on this call still, is that the information literally is changing by the minute, and we actually have an announcement that Chief Safaya is going to make in a minute, which came in during all of this. So, um, I just think something short, sweet, and simple, um, that just says, this is what it's being used for. It doesn't have to be overly complicated. We're, we're probably one of the last communities in the Commonwealth to even, uh, put this into place, so.
So, it could be a very short meeting, um, if we, if we attain that. So, um, I would just ask that before the meetings concluded this evening, that the, that a, a date is set, um, uh, for a follow-up select board meeting, and I, I'd recommend either this Friday or next Monday, depending on what works for, for everyone.
Um, Friday might be tough for me. I could do Thursday afternoon, if people are available late Thursday afternoon, like four o'clock.
Thanks for being available.
If, from my point of view, I would prefer a Thursday time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Thursday at four?
Thursday at four.
Okay.
It can be posted tomorrow.
Just this one item.
We've got plenty of time.
It can be posted. All right. Thank you. So, we're going to, we're going to look at that.
Chief Safaya raised his hand.
I'm sorry, who did?
Chief Safaya has raised his hand.
Ah, sir.
I did. Uh, if, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, can I speak- If I may, Madam Chair, can I speak to this topic just for two minutes?
Please.
I understand that, Mr. McCaffrey, you're looking, I believe you're looking for just a defined objective of the site, and please correct me if I'm wrong, in how that message is going to be delivered and articulated in an effort to insulate the organization in the Town of Millis.
That's correct.
Our, the way we do it is, we have a trained PIO, it's a one-week training, basically media relations. Once you've taken the class, you can post online on our Facebook, and we have literally a force sentence policy. If I may, it says, "This site was created to provide timely information regarding safety, events, bulletins, notices, and general information for residents and visitors of our community, and to provide a platform for interaction with the Millis Police." This page is monitored and managed by trained members of the Millis Police Department. The Millis Police Department manages this page as a limited public forum, and therefore the following conditions apply. And then it just goes into, we don't monitor it 24/7, so don't use it instead of 911, and et cetera, and rules and expectations on how you will treat people. But if you're a push-only, it doesn't, that doesn't affect--
I just want to say, for those who don't know, with respect to the PIO, first of all, I've actually done training for police chiefs, but also, I am one of 350 people in the public relations profession who have the credential that I do, and I'm one of three in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I feel pretty qualified to participate in the development of any policy or any process, which is probably why I'm exasperated that we are where we are, because I just know how important this tool is. And I'm looking forward to getting it up and moving, because I think it's going to be only positive, and I think it's going to end up being uneventful in terms of any repercussions, because so many other municipalities have this tool.
Well, Madam Chair, I agree. If we do it right, that will be the outcome. And also, we must do it right. That's what I'm asking for. And if this is, the chief's statement is the kind of thing I've been looking for. This is what we're doing, this is who's going to do it. By the way, we've trained somebody, which means we're paying somebody to do it. And I know there's models here, I'm just looking for something that I believe we can successfully do. And, you know, I think that's what I'm looking for. And I think that the solution that's being suggested is we come back together in a couple of days with something that's simple and straightforward, and hopefully that'll meet the objectives of the board members, then we can go ahead and do what we want to do.
And then I can certainly send out that draft process to the board by sometime during the day on Wednesday.
Yes.
Agreed.
Great, okay, great. We are down to the end of the meeting, and I think the end of the participants, too, so I want to thank those people who hung with us. You can hear views on this. I do want to ask Chief Safaya, an announcement came through that I think you wanted to make, and I wanted to give you the opportunity to make it, because this might have been the type of thing we would have considered pushing out to veterans, Chief Safaya. You have to take yourself off mute.
There he is!
While we were meeting, I received an email from the Kraft family, and it's, this is an important announcement for any veterans in our community. The Kraft family and the New England Patriots have welcomed all veterans to Gillette Stadium to pick up two weeks' worth of food as part of the Massachusetts Military Support Foundation's Food for Vets Initiative. Starting tomorrow, March 31st, through April 10th at 10:00 a.m., the foundation will be providing two weeks of food to any veteran that needs it. So if you just go right to the stadium, there'll be marquees that direct you to where all that food is being distributed.
Great, thank you, and hopefully we can get that word out. We're down to the last two agenda items, and they both reflect a lot of work by both the select board, as well as town council, who happens to be the council who worked on both contracts, and that is ratification, first and foremost, of our fire chief and director of our emergency agency contract, that being for the position occupied by Richard Barrett, who I do believe is still with us. That is correct. So no time like the present. Our fire chief has been working 24/7, obviously, on the COVID response issue, mobilizing resources well beyond our community to benefit our community. The thing that I want to say personally about the chief is what you don't know about him. And what an incredible job he does in really, really tough times, that nobody would ever fathom, to have somebody with so much humanity working for us and being the lead of this department. It's something I'm really grateful for as a resident, and I'm really pleased that the contract came together, because he was a partner in the process. And among the items that the community should know is that the chief was willing to follow the select board's template for introducing a performance-based component to the compensation as it rolls out over the next three years. So I am, first of all, opening to comment for any of my colleagues, anything that they wish to say about this contract, and then we'll ask the town administrator to make a motion, or to recommend a motion. Sorry, Bill. Mr. McCaffrey?
I get to go first?
Sure.
No, I'd just like to say that this contract, I think, as the chair has indicated, is something that the board is delighted to be able to reach agreement with Chief Barrett, who is doing a fantastic job. And we have negotiated a salary adjustment, which is a market adjustment, because we, the data shows us that he was, we were not paying competitive wages, and we've also, as the chair indicated, appreciated some performance-based compensation in the out years. So I think that this was a negotiation that went pretty smoothly, and it's a recognition of the commitment of the team, with the chair and town council, and also the chief himself. And it does reflect not only our satisfaction with Chief Barrett and his contribution to the community, but I think is going to be, would be well-supported by the town meeting and others to be able to fund this. So thank you for the hard work, the dedication, and for working with our negotiating team to come up with an agreement. It's always good to do it before the one we had in force expires, so that's, so we never had any lag.
Mr. Jermaine?
I can't really add much more to what my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, said. This town is privileged to have someone like Chief Barrett working with us, and I do mean working with us. He's someone we can trust, he puts in 110% effort at all times, he's built a department that we should be, we should all be very proud of, at any rate. I saw, I've gone through the details, I've worked on the details of the contract, and I couldn't be more pleased with the way the whole process worked, but it is a reflection of the individual himself, and it's just a privilege to have the opportunity to work with him. So thank you, Mr. Chief Barrett.
Mr. Town Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I ask the board to ratify the chief's contract, I just want to add that not only is it a joy to work with a chief, but, and I've said this to both chiefs, I sleep better at night knowing these two professionals are doing their job here in town, and I feel all the citizens of Millis should feel the same. And with that, I enthusiastically recommend that the board vote to ratify the contract, three-year contract with Chief Barrett, to be effective July 1st, 2020, until June 30th, 2023.
Someone just needs to make the motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the employment agreement between the Town of Millis and Richard Barrett, Chief of, Fire Chief for the period July 2020 to June 2023.
Second. It's been moved in second, and to ratify Chief Barrett's contract from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2023. I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
And Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
And the emotional Ms. Barnes, yes. And I would like to congratulate, with immense heartfelt sincerity, our fire chief, who is in the hot seat today, and it's just great that the contract came through at a time when he's being tested and his department is being tested, so that we can say thank you in a meaningful way.
Well, Madam Chair, thank you so much for the kind words. It means a lot coming from this board, I really appreciate it. More importantly, I appreciate the negotiating that was done. You know, there was give and take, there was discussion, and I think at the end of the negotiation, both parties left feeling that it was a good contract for all involved. As you all know, this town's the most important thing to me, other than my family. These residents are my family, and, you know, we take it to heart. And I would agree, I think, you know, having Chief Safaya as my counterpart, I think we're a pretty fantastic duo, and the town's lucky to get two men that can work so close together, build such great departments, and really move this town forward, more importantly, really keep it safe. So very proud to serve Town of Millis, and thankful for another contract, and I look forward to getting past COVID, getting on to the things that make Millis special, and again, I thank you very much.
Well, we thank, we have refrained from trying to ask who's Batman and who's Robin, but we can--
Yeah.
Our final contract that has been, is prepared for ratification, is with the hard-working DPW union, also known as ASPI Council 93. This was a longer collaborative process, but again, stewarded by the very able attorney Kate Federoff as town council, and we have emerged with terms. And so I think I would like to ask Mr. Gazinski if you would like to say something.
I can't take any credit for this one, Loring.
This was Attorney Jenkins that handled this one.
Oh, I'm s--
That's all right. So, yes, we did have some bumps in the road on this contract negotiation when it started, but we were able to get past that over some time, and I think came up with a contract that's fair to all parties, that also allows the town to make some organizational changes to the department to better meet the new demands of the 21st century and a growing organization. So I would like to thank Loring for all, or the Chair Barnes for all her work on that, as well as the DPW Director Jim McKay for all his hard work and diligence in keeping this thing moving even during its rough patches. So with that, I'd like to, and this agreement's already been approved by the ASPI union, the DPW employees, and just asking for the board to formally vote to approve the terms of the MOU.
I'm going to ask one of my colleagues to make a motion, and just before, I just want to also acknowledge the hard work of both Jim McKay, as the DPW Director, as well as Carol Johnston, our Director of Finance. They did a lot of work. This is a very complicated contract, for the fact that there are a multitude of professional licenses that are involved in the calculations of wages, and there's some department restructuring, so that contributed to the duration of the dialogue. And if any of my colleagues would either like to make a motion or offer a comment, Loring's orders.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that the board ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Millis and ASPI Council 93, representing the DPW workers of the Town of Millis, for the contract to run from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2022.
Second.
So moved, I will pull the board to approve this contract with ASPI Council 93. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. The contract is here, heretofore ratified, in accordance with the terms that have been stipulated, and we thank everybody that was involved in that process, and we want to recognize that the DPW was also working in very unique times, and so we want to thank them for their service. At this point, I just want to point out, there are just three remaining slides. They are a reminder that we do have some online resources, and we encourage you to enlist in the list serves, and to be mindful of going back to recheck websites where information might be added, but you weren't notified about it unless you were looking for it, or you were on one of those lists. We want to impress upon the need for everybody to be kind, to know that rumors are just that, they are ruminous, and they are just rumors, but we do have portals of facts, so we encourage you to consult those. We do encourage you to heed the experts who have been here all night, to say one thing and one thing only, and that is to be safe. And being safe means all taking personal responsibility for ourselves and for the people who we love. And also then to announce that our next scheduled select board meeting is planned for Monday, April 13th. The venue to be determined, but it would be likely that it would be, again, here on Zoom, because we have the continued restrictions on being more than six feet together in place, and it's likely that the public buildings, as a result, would continue to be closed. So at this point, I'm going to announce that the meeting will be on Zoom, and if it changes, we will make that announcement to reverse it. Are there any other comments enclosed before I ask for a moment of adjournment? Anybody? I want to say thank you to everybody who participated, everybody who attended, everybody who watched from home, and a most hearty welcome back to Pete, who's been a little under the weather, but he looks pretty good. So I'm pretty excited to see his smiling face, and we know that with every passing day, he's going to continue to feel more like his old self. So do we have a moment, a motion for adjournment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Second.
I will pull the board. It's so moved. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. We'll see everybody for, there will be a public meeting at 4:00 on Thursday, also on Zoom, to discuss how we move forward with a town-community Facebook page, and thereafter on April 13th. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations to Chief Barrett, and thank you, everybody on the front lines in our town, in official positions, and certainly to the nurses and doctors and medical staff, administrative staff, everybody who literally is on the front lines of this. We're all in it together, and we will fight it together. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Goodnight, guys.
Thank you.